Order. Are we able to go live into the meeting?
You're live.
All right, thank you. So, welcome, everybody, to the Finance Committee of the Whole. Today's date is February 15, 2022. We have a packed agenda today and lots of presentations. Before we get started, however, I do need to ask for a motion to suspend the video policing, the video policy 2350 for board members to allow more than one board member to participate via video conferencing. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kalia, did you get that?
I did, I took it manually. I did, I took it manually, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then for speakers list tonight, we actually have no speakers but one comment from our, from a staff member, community member, actually, and that is up on board docs and was emailed to all the commissioners earlier to read. Let me see. Can I also get a motion for the, do we have minutes, Kalia, because I don't see them on here?
Yes, they are there, you just need to open the, they're embedded, they're not attached, they're embedded.
Hold on, where would they be embedded, because I don't see them?
Do you see where it says minutes from the, it says, one second, I'm going to the content area. If you click on the agenda item, right where it says minutes?
No, if, actually, if you want to come look at my screen and show me where they're at.
Do you see where it says view minutes?
Yeah, view minutes, right there.
Oh.
There you have, they're embedded.
Oh, it's a link, it's a live link, thank you.
It's a live link.
That is interesting, first time I'm seeing a live link. Can I get a motion for the minutes from the December 21, 2021 Finance Committee of the Whole?
So move.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Malloy seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voting is open. I did hear Commissioner Malloy and Adams, so I will record your vote in the system, thank you. Commissioner Patterson, are you able to vote on here?
Mine didn't come up.
I don't know if you're logged in.
Oh, okay, let's see.
I can take the vote manually for you?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, hi, Ricardo, how are you? Oh, it's good to see you.
Dr. Jalloh, we're live on Facebook and YouTube.
Sorry.
It's okay. But it is, and we are very excited to have Commissioner Adams rejoin us today, so we're going to clap. We are very happy to have Commissioner Adams join us.
Commissioner Adams, I think that you are the most favorite board commissioner, by all known.
Looking good.
I think that the district staff loves you more than anybody else.
You are their favorite.
Yeah, see, you are their favorite.
So, we do welcome him back, so thank you for that, Dr. Jalloh. Up next is the preview for the March 2021 Resolution Packet, and so these will not be voted on until next month, but we do review them 30 days in advance. And I'm not sure if anybody has questions on them, but if so, I'll give you all a second to open them up, and I will do a roll call down the path to see if anybody has questions on them.
Yeah, Chairwoman, Vice President Lebron.
President Elliott.
Yeah, just in terms of the two TBD in contract award renovations, can someone explain why we have TBDs at this point? That is in East High School pages, it looks like 27, 20, 27, 28, 29, 30, so why are there in the areas where participation statistics?
President Elliott, can we get back to you on that this is an East resolution and they're not here to answer that?
All right. There are other high schools that are under our CSD, so Charlotte is listed under here, East is one of the schools.
Is this for construction? Mike is on the phone, thank you for popping your head in.
What page was that, just so I can document?
Starting at 27.
Okay, thank you.
It's page eight, though, on the attachment, but the page number of the actual board resolution is 27.
Okay.
It's a weird number system.
So, Mike, there's some TBDs in there, so I want to know why we have those TBDs.
Yeah, so actually, I can explain this particular situation with the TBDs. One of the things that we're doing, good evening, commissioners, as part of our resolution revamp, is working with different departments that have resolutions coming in to prevent a resolution exception form having to be filled out. So, these are pretty boilerplate contract resolutions that Mike's team puts together. So, we put in a placeholder for these, and they will be filled in prior to you receiving them with the 48-hour packet for the board meeting. But this gives us the opportunity to review the documentation as an administration rather than waiting until the very last minute when all of the information is ready.
So, I'm sure it's going to be in there for the meeting, but I wanted to bring that up.
Yes, good evening, President Elliott, we have a water issue in our school, so my apologies for not being right at the microphone, but this is the only group of resolutions, the ones tied to the capital projects that have this exception that are attached to it.
Okay, I don't know if your mic is really on, is your mic on?
I'm probably not speaking loud enough.
Yeah.
This is the only group of resolutions that have the exception attached to it, only the ones that involve capital projects, and usually it's about two or two weeks or so prior to the meeting that we'd be able to fill everything in, if not sooner.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
President Elliott, do you have any more questions?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Simmons, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Malloy, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Adams, do you have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, my parent rep, Rebecca Harrington, do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
So, I was wondering about the anti-racism curriculum that's being created at School 17. It's the first resolution, 1003 targeted, for targeted grant that's been ongoing. Is this something that's going to be available to other schools, or is this specifically only targeted for the School 17 population?
Chief Rondamorian is going to come up and provide that information for you, thank you.
Thanks.
And I guess I'd just like to add on to that, why School 17 as opposed to other schools?
Yeah, the school is more than willing to share these.
Can you put your mic on, please?
The school is really more than willing to share these projects, they did a lot of project-based learning, and they identified some gaps in their data and confronting some of the implicit bias from their teachers, so they built it into their curriculum and they're working on those units now, and they're, they're very interested in sharing it with other schools.
Thank you. Rebecca, were you able to hear that?
I was, I was just wondering a little bit more about how it's being tracked and implemented and making sure that, that those results and that work is, is going somewhere and who might be responsible for it.
Ultimately, it would be the building principal, right now, they're just in the beginning stages of rewriting the curriculum pieces, so it'll be a little while out, but it's part of a three-year plan that they're implementing, so within the third year, I'm thinking, which would be next year, where they feel like they have some final product, they'd be able to share that with other schools. Ultimately, I could share that with the principal that, that a plan can be developed on how this is going to be shared with other systems, and we could share that out.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca, did, do you have more questions?
Yeah, I have one more question. So, as far as the, the resolution for, I'm just looking for resolution number, I apologize, for the Agile Sports Technologies Grant, or is it Grant? Is it Grant? From the general funds, I'm sorry, I just don't see a resolution number. I'm just wondering how many students this is going to cover? It's, it's page 49 of the Resolution Packet.
It's, it's up on the screen, resolution numbers aren't assigned because we're so far out.
Oh, okay, sorry. And it's, so this would be page 49.
Yeah.
And it's $75,000, and I'm just wondering how many students this is hoping to, to support.
So, the contract with Agile covers the wide range of our sports, usually across three-sport seasons, so any sport that requires any, I have no, any sport that requires video video analysis, so all of our student athletes and coaches have access to this partnership and this technology. In terms of numbers, if you think about the numbers across athletes, across teams, we are well past into the thousands.
Okay, thank you, I think that's it, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rebecca. I do have a question on page 32 of the packet, but it's Resolution Page 51, on the Broner Group LLC and what this contract is for. I do recognize that it says as an external evaluator of the CCLC grant programs. One, I would like to understand, you know, why we're doing an external evaluator of the grant programs. So, if someone could just explain what that is and how that group is also selected, thank you.
So, this is a legacy contract in that we have been with them, and this is the last part of the 21st Century Contract, so this actually pre-dates some of the work, so the Broner Group was selected when we started with the 21st Century Grant, when our last year of reporting, and that's how we're here now.
Do you know how they were selected, or?
I do not, but we can add that to the question log, and I'll go back to the team that worked with that process prior.
Okay, just curious about that. Kalia, did you capture that question?
Please repeat, I'm sorry, I was typing.
How the Broner Group LLC was selected to do the grant programs evaluation externally? Got it?
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there.
If there are no other questions, I'm going to move on to the next standing agenda item, which is the review and discussion of the financial reports for January 2022, the unaudited financial report and trend analysis given by our CFO, Carleen Pierce. Ms. Pierce, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Lebron. Good evening, President Elliott, Commissioners, Superintendent, Dr. Jalloh, and our CSD community. As always, it's an honor to be here before you this evening and a privilege to serve the children of our CSD. Kalia knows exactly where to start these days with regard to our financial report, and given the fact that we have so much going on in this evening's agenda, we'll get right to it. I do want to say that January was another uneventful month, and in Finance Department, we like that, when it's uneventful, it's only good news to report. So, Kalia has taken us to page number five, our cash flow, and what you're going to see on there is that we received an unexpected advance of our general aid in January. If you go back to the December Packet, you'll see that we had only projected $98 million to be received in January, and in fact, it came out to be about $157 million. So, again, we thank the state for that advance, this is not extra money in no way, shape, or form, it's just an advance of state aid. It's my understanding that when the state does have funds on hand, they will advance school districts' funds when they can ahead of time, and that's what had happened here. So, a good month to compare, then, is our favorite month of March that we've been watching, that wonderful week of March 11th, where we went from a few weeks ago, we were looking at $2 million in that week as our liquid cash flow. Last month, I reported to you that it moved up to $9 million, and I'm very ecstatic to let you know this evening, the state came through for us, and that week now represents about $80 million in liquid cash for that week. So, a tremendous improvement, and overall, the cash flow is remaining very strong. Again, I want to point out, though, it's not extra money, I don't want to, I can't say that enough, it is not extra money, it's only an advance. With regard to our revenues, we do have, the special aid fund is now reflecting the approval of the ARC money, so that went up by the $197 million. And if you go back to page three, please, Kalia, thank you, what you're going to see are two items there within page three, right there, and we have the H and the K Fund. So, within the H Fund, there was a payment out to factor capital improvement, and in the amount of $418,000, we wanted to bring that to your attention. And also, you may recall that you approved the resolution for the CIP bond recently, and now, that next item down in the K Fund is now reflecting the establishment of the budget for those projects. Again, as with last month, you have your food service program analysis as part of your packet. If there's any improvements, again, that you would like to see with regard to that analysis, we welcome that input from you. As you see on that analysis, with the receipt of the pandemic relief funds of $2.1 million, we are in a positive cash flow, excuse me, a positive balance, a profitable balance, and without that money, had we not received it, we would be in a deficit of $228,000. Lastly, in your packet for this month, you had the student activity reports, and you also had the charter school enrollment report. With regard to the charter school enrollment, I am happy to say that we are experiencing a positive variance, approximately $6.2 million, so it means that what we had budgeted is actually greater than the actual expense incurred at this point in time. That would be a nice trend to maintain if we were able to do so. And I will open the floor up to any questions.
Thank you, I'll start on Zoom. Commissioner Adams, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Malloy, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a brief one regarding food service, I just wanted, I'm trying to understand the numbers that I'm looking at, and I'm trying to figure out beyond, like, what we pay out of pocket as a district total towards our food service program, because I know there are a lot of other districts that pay out of pocket and have to pay additional fees, and they don't just, they don't just depend upon the federal reimbursement. So, what I'm trying to determine is how much are we spending of our own money that is not reimbursed by the state or the federal government? How much do we pay total out of our own pocket? If someone could answer that, that'd be great.
I'm sorry, but can you direct what page you're looking at to have the conversation?
Page 41, page 41 of the packet.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if Mike is still in the room or not, okay, great. Commissioner Malloy, before Chief Schmidt comes up, I do want to say that this is for one month, so that is for the month of December, and I will turn it over to Mike.
Good evening, once again, President Elliott, Vice President Lebron, Commissioners, Superintendent. The, the L Fund is responsible to submit a balanced budget at the, at the beginning of the, of the school year. If everything goes according to plan, then there would not be a reason for us to supplement the L Fund with an A Fund dollar figure. We, we did have to do that during COVID because of our meal numbers were, were so, were so low, but in a normal circumstance, non-pandemic, that, that L Fund should basically sustain on its own. There was a question at the last meeting in regards to if the Board of Education was going to contribute a certain dollar figure, what would that, what would the, what would be the result of that? So, in our budget documents that we submitted on Friday, we kind of captured what that would look like at a certain dollar figure contribution, for lack of a better way of saying it, that would result in, in upgrade in terms of the commodities we could purchase and that type of thing. But as a, as a general operating question, the L Fund should, should run self-sustainable. And any, we cannot make a profit, so anything, if we had a profit, it would go back into our capital fund within the lunch fund for upgrading of equipment and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca, Commissioner Malloy, did you have a follow-up to that?
I do, I'll put it in the question log.
Okay. Rebecca Harrington, I'm going to go to my parent rep.
Thank you. I actually had a request of the Finance Department, if we could possibly sit down and do some type of page of definitions that might explain what is covered in some of the more complex categories. I just think over time, it will cut down on a lot of questions that I get asked, because I don't think any parent should have to come to this document and then, you know, ask dozens of questions just to be able to understand some of the basics that a, that a definition sheet might allow, so I just wanted to put that request out there. But other than that, I'm good for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, we welcome that.
Thank you, and I do think there is somewhat of an acronym definition in the budget book, so perhaps just pulling that out, Carleen Pierce, and like sending it to Rebecca to see if she could look it over to make sure that it matches, because I do know a lot of the acronyms are in that budget book. So, just as a starting point, Rebecca, would that be okay? We submitted what's in the budget book and pulled out the acronym pages that defines the different terms?
Yeah, absolutely, and then, if there's a way that we can break down just a little bit simpler some of the categories and what they include, because there's an understanding within the district of what certain things are included under certain categories, but unless you get really involved, it's difficult to understand some of them.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to kind of give some oxygen to a little bit of it, if I can, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, so perhaps starting there, Carleen, if that's okay. All right, I'll start to my left. Commissioner Simmons, do you have any questions?
Similar to Commissioner Malloy, I was wondering about the USDA federal dollars that were funded and what we had financially to supplement those funds, but in addition to that question, just wondering if there's opportunity within the USDA allocations of food, services, or what have you, are there opportunities for some of our partners or community members to take a look at the options and maybe help to identify things that might be more pleasing, because there are a lot of concerns that continue to come up regarding the food selection for our students?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Simmons, yes, absolutely, I think we've done some outreach in the past where we've elicited the, the ideas from students and other community groups and so forth, but we are definitely open to any of those, any of those suggestions, and I think it's also an opportunity for us to explain how the model works and what the, what our limitations are in terms of what we can serve dietarily, I don't think that's actually a word, by the way, in terms of, within, within a nutrition framework for our students, and they have limitations on salt and sugar and that type of thing, but I think it's a two-way street, and certainly getting some input from other outside groups would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just want to put in a plug now for all commissioners, if you have questions regarding like the food services budget, we're here to talk about this report for this month, but budget season is coming up, and we're going to be discussing board priorities tonight as well, and I think that's a perfect segue to incorporate some of these issues through either board priorities or through the budget deliberations as we move forward. So, that's an issue that we want to put some, I guess, bite in teeth into, this would be the process later tonight when we talk about board priorities. President Elliott, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Patterson, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you so much to our CFO, Carleen Pierce, thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Can I get a motion to forward the finance report unaudited for January 2022, the, and the trend analysis?
So move.
Second.
Did you get that?
Yes, Commissioner Malloy.
President Elliott, and seconded by Commissioner Adams.
Okay, and then Commissioner Adams, okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the online voting is open.
So, Kalia, I know I'm logged in.
I can take your, your vote man, manually, President Elliott.
Okay, got it. Thank you, BP.
Commissioner Patterson, do you want me to also vote for you manually?
You need to talk a little louder, Kalia, turn your mic on.
Sorry about that, got it, thank you.
Hey, just one, one point, Kalia, on the, online, on the recommended action, says forward to the 227 business meeting, so I assume that.
It means 17.
It should be 217.
Yes.
Yep.
I've updated the motion, thank you.
Thank, thank you for that, I just went into like naming the report, because I didn't name the report. So, we're just motioning it out of committee to go into the board business meeting to vote on officially on Thursday when I give my report update. Okay, up next is our presentation for the preliminary budget forecast and the alignment to the strategic and academic and fiscal plan, just as a, I guess, a point of education and update to the commissioners and the community, this is required through state legislation and law that we have this and that we do this presentation, and then afterwards, I will facilitate a conversation around some of the board priorities, and we'll try to align them as well to both the strategic, academic, and fiscal plan, well, all three, the strategic plan that the district has, the academic and fiscal plan of the state monitor as well. Carleen, that's you again, turning it over to you or two, Dr. Myers-Malz.
Both of us.
Oh, so I'm going to start with Dr. Myers-Malz, and then you guys will tag-team.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Lebron, and good evening to all of our commissioners, our staff, and our Rochester City School District community. Tonight, we are embarking on the journey of developing our 2022-23 budget. Tom, if you could put the presentation up, or Kalia, is it up? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Dr. Jalloh and Commissioner Adams. As we embark on developing our 2022-23 budget, we are looking forward to ensuring that our allocated resources improve teaching and learning first and foremost. allocated resources improve teaching and learning first and foremost, facilitate certainly innovation, promote high-quality learning experiences for our scholars, and continue to adhere to the expectations for fiscal accountability in the Rochester City School District. Guiding our work are the following documents, the Rochester City School District Strategic Plan, the State Academic and Fiscal Plans, which outlines the objectives and priorities that guide our district. We also, the corrective action plans for special education and for bilingual education, as well as the consent decree. As a district community, we are focused on improving and increasing our capacity in four strategic focus areas: achievement, opportunity, innovation, and connection. These focus areas provide guidance, leadership, and policy decisions, as well as the development of initiatives and strategies to achieve our vision of ensuring that all students have equitable access to a high-quality education and graduate each student as a productive member of society. The Rochester City School District budget is the vehicle by which we communicate our values and visions for our school community. It signals a commitment to our mission, our scholars, and sets the priorities for growth and achievement individually and collectively. Without a balanced and secure budget, which we must have at the end of this process, we cannot fully accomplish our goals for student growth and achievement. In order to grow and sustain the school district that we aspire to be, we need to continue engaging in open and honest conversations about our finances aligned with the specific needs of our district. So as we think about our priorities as far as the academic plan, we have begun to take steps to shift from an operational focus to an emphasis on student outcomes and student achievement. We also are focusing on turnaround strategies, because we have multiple schools in receivership, CSI, which is Comprehensive School Improvement and Targeted Support Schools. We have to align our resources to fortify academic priorities, again, specifically, and there are many of them outlined in our academic plan. Professional development that exists throughout the organization and just not to relegate it to a small group of individuals. Feasibility in zone configuration, and certainly college career and civic readiness, which is a metric upon which our district is measured upon. In our strategic plan, certainly the corrective action plans, as I mentioned, for special education and bilingual students, we have prioritized, and Dr. Black has spoken about, increasing proficiency on New York State ELA and math assessments in grades three through eight, improving school accountability, and fortifying social emotional supports. Specifically, as we talk about the financial plan, prioritizing upgrading our financial management system, we've had many conversations about the antiquated nature of that system, and improvements will help us to do our job to work harder, smarter rather than harder. Medicaid reimbursement continues to be a priority, and then upgrading our special education management system. As you are aware, we have, again, corrective action plans for special education, as well as consent decree. And when we have a management system that is contemporary, it allows us to ensure that we fulfill the expectations in both of those guiding documents, and then certainly eradicating the structural deficit through sound budget practices.
Okay, so if we can turn to the next slide, please. As you know, this time of year, all we have that we can work with is the executive budget, which was delivered to us in pretty good time this year, was actually delivered on January 18th, which we greatly appreciate, because it gives us that much more time to start looking at the numbers, reviewing them, and understanding what the proposal from the Governor's Office looks like. So again, hats off to Governor Hochul for getting that budget out to us in such a timely manner. There are three bullets that I really wanted to discuss with regard to the state aid runs this year in the executive budget, and the first being the foundation aid. For those of you who have been watching closely and even advocating for the return to foundation aid formula actually being put back into place, you might recall that we've been frozen for a number of years. So the foundation aid is becoming reinstated at this point in time. It's being allocated out, if you will, over a period of time. And so we're in the first phase of that. And you'll see that on the state aid runs, it actually was listed as $29 million. And when we started working with the Big Five, as well as SED, it became clear that our enrollment figures were not accurate. And what I mean by that is that the numbers that were actually submitted to the state were approximately 1,200 students greater than what our actual enrollment was. And because foundation aid is driven by student enrollment in part, and again, it's a very complex formula, but enrollment absolutely plays a critical role in that formula, we knew that there was going to be an adjustment that needed to be made to the foundation aid when we made this discovery. So instead of the 29.1 million that's listed on the executive budget runs, we're looking at actually something closer to 21 million. So we already know that we have to make an adjustment downward. Once the legislative runs are provided, after the budget is approved, we'll absolutely have a solid figure in which to work with. The next item down is charter school tuition, excuse me, charter school transition aid. This is a known progression downward with this particular transition aid or this particular aid. And what that means is that this was the aid, as you might recall, we talked about it last year, where public schools ready themselves for this flow of students out of the public schools and into the charter schools. And so again, this year, we're seeing that reduction of the 1.7 million. This will continue to decrease over time, so this is not surprising. We are just making you aware of it to keep it out there in the forefront of your mind that it is an ongoing event until eventually it just run out. We will also have to be making a reduction in transportation aid from what is stated on the executive budget. The reason being, you might recall, is that transportation aid is always driven from the year prior. So transportation aid for next year is driven off of the expenditures this year. So as it relates to our budget, this year, our transportation budget is actually, it's recognizing a surplus at this point in time, meaning that we are expending less money than what was budgeted. That's a good thing for this year, but what happens for next year then is that the numbers based that you'll see on the executive run then are overstated, because again, if the expenditure is less in one year, the revenue following in the next year is going to be reduced. Okay? And so we just have to keep that in mind. So that's another adjustment that we'll be making as we progress in this budget season. On the very next slide, we've given you three years of the projected state aid runs using the executive budget. And the reason I'm making a point of saying it's using the executive budget is because you want to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples. So again, this is year over year, the executive budget only. It's not the executive budget to our final approved budget. It's executive budget over executive budget for the last three years. So when you take a look at walking through this particular slide, you're going to see that we are, towards the middle of that slide, when we first had the CARES money, the CARES grant, which is going to be running out at the end of this year, actually was recorded in the general fund. When the SIRSa money was introduced at first in the executive budget, it was thought to be that it was going to also be recorded in the general fund similar to CARES. The reason that it's now removed in the third year is that we know now, the final decision was made to take the SIRSa money and put it into the special aid fund. So again, what you're seeing in front of you is the general fund only. It's not the special aid fund or a combination of the special aid fund. It's general fund only. And I do want to say that when you take a look at the grand tally, then I'm making the adjustment for CARES and for SIRSa, year over year, this year, this current year that we're going into versus last year, or the current year we're in now, there actually was an increase of $72 million in the executive run. We do need to make that adjustment downward for the foundation aid, like we talked about. And with that, then, in the executive run only, we're looking at about a $64.5 million increase in what's being proposed by the Governor's Office. So now we just need to wait for the legislative runs to be approved. If we go to the next slide, and this is nothing new, the budget assumptions were actually delivered to you back in October when we presented to you our long-range financial plan. And so in that long-range plan, there was not only the presentation itself, there was a document prepared for you by our Executive Director of Budget, Terry Hessler, and he did a wonderful job in capturing all of the budget assumptions that were used to develop that plan. So again, the plan was developed in October, and it ran out for several years using the same set of assumptions. As time goes on, and now that we're actually in budget season, and actually, when you're taking the assumptions, and the assumptions are now becoming reality, we will start to build the budget based on the assumptions with fact. And so that's how we solidify our budget and the estimates that we will provide to you. I want to say too, that these same assumptions, the same information was included within the financial plan that Dr. Jallow had approved November timeframe. So that's another resource to tie it all back together if anyone has the need to do so. On the next slide, Callie, actually, and then very next one, thank you. Just this gentle reminder that the SIRSa and ARP money, as we all know, is going to come to an end. And that time, that end, if you will, is going to be here before we know it. So now we have to start, even though we just got it, we have to start planning for the end, to make sure that we are preparing ourselves so as not to face a fiscal cliff at the end of that term. So the SIRSa money will then be expiring on September 30th of 2023, and the ARP money will be expiring September 2024. Again, any initiatives that were started will either have to find their way into the general fund and be sustained in the general fund without causing a deficit or a gap in the budget. And any types of positions that were in these funds, again, will have to find how to either, if they're decided to be kept within the budgets moving forward, that they were found to be valuable, obviously, money will have to be then found within the general fund by other expenditures being reduced in order to do so. We cannot afford to get into a deficit situation, nor can we afford a fiscal cliff. So we have to plan very carefully. On the very next slide, we just wanted to review with you some budget development enhancements. We recently had our work session where we went over, Executive Director Terry Hessler went over with you, the movement to the Uniform System of Account Codes, as he explained that in the budget document. The budget book itself is in its second year of a three-year redesign. The budget process itself is now in its second year of a three-year redesign. And so we are embracing the opportunity to have a new look, to have the information be more meaningful, and just to provide greater transparency, as well as integrity to all of you, as well as to our community members. We were able to start our budget process late October. We rolled it out over the course of several months to approximately 200 individuals who received training. They could attend the training as many times as they wanted and even have one-on-one sessions if they cared to do that, because it was important for our budget directors, our budget managers, to make sure that they understand the budgets that they are not only submitting on behalf of their departments, but then tracking and making sure that they're staying within their budgetary limits for their specific schools or departments. The last item that I have listed down here is the integrated usage of tools to support the implementation of participatory budgeting. And what that means is that Recommendation 26 in the financial plan had listed several tools, several reports that we had to deliver to each of the, any individual that oversaw a budget, had to have access to these reports, and rightfully so, because they need the tools in order to manage their budgets and again, stay within the guidelines of that budget that they themselves submitted for approval. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Myers-Malz.
Thank you, CFO Pierce. So as we just finalize, certainly, when we think about alignment, we have to ensure there's academic and fiscal plan alignment. And so you'll just see reiterated over and over again, the laser-like focus on academics, aligning our resources to fortify academics. Dr. Black has come to you every month during ESA subcommittee meetings to talk about the comprehensive program relative to assessment, and she unpacked some of the NWEA, as well as iReady information. And she's also spoken about some of the professional development. When we think about the financial plan alignment, this is really about the embedding systems and structures into what we do, everything that we do relative to the finances in the district. So if it's the budget transfer policy, or ensuring that we continue to monitor the expenditures and revenues, procurement policy, encumbrances process, encumbrance processes, P-card redesign, and also ensuring that administrators have the budget reporting tools. So the Finance Department has really worked hard to go out and conduct professional development with individuals who are responsible for budgets in the district. Certainly, we work to continue to reduce our expenditures and maximize revenues, and that's something that we'll continue to have robust conversations with the Board of Education. We need to optimize particularly procedures regarding Medicaid and charter schools, leverage our grants to make sure that we are getting the value added, and then the reduction of reliance on BOCs. As far as next steps are concerned, March is going to be incredibly busy, and we'll be spending a lot of time together talking about budget, finances, revenues, expenditures, et cetera. So you can see, we have to have our first submission to the state monitor, so we'll be working over the next week to finalize that process, to have a draft balanced budget to Dr. Jallow. Then there's the joint presentation to the State Education Department, submission to the Board of Education. Again, we'll have lots of conversations with the Board of Education so we can move towards final approval. And then we make our final submission to City Council, and we'll have conversations. So all of this occurs during the months of March, April, May, and June. So it is extremely busy. We will be working in a very concentrated and purposeful and targeted way over the next weeks and months to come, and we look forward to finalizing a budget that helps us maximize certainly the resources that we've been very fortunate to receive, but also ensuring that we do have that laser-like focus on academics, but also that we are fulfilling the expectations of the academic, the fiscal plans. We're uplifting those important priorities that we have outlined in the strategic plan, and that we also fulfill the expectations in the corrective action plans, as well as the consent decree. So with that, we are excited and happy to take your questions.
All right, thank you. And before I actually start taking questions, I just want to highlight some of the key dates that you just mentioned, because they are coming up for the board and for the community. On Wednesday, March 2nd, we're going to have our public budget webinar. This event will happen over Zoom. On Tuesday, March 15th, the budget is due to the state monitor, and she will have her review and analysis, and will present it to the board at a later date, but it is due to her from the district. On March 15th, we also will convene as finance at the whole, and both the district and the ECPO superintendents will present their overall budget to the Board of Education and to the community, and we'll receive a draft budget book, as well as the capital improvement book presented following the meeting. Thursday, March 24th, the state monitor will give a presentation in the March business meeting to both the board members and to the community as well. And this is in accordance with the state legislation that it has to be done 45 days from the budget adoption, so it is following the requirements of the legislative and how they wrote that law. On Thursday, March 31st, is the deadline to provide the proposed budget, the state monitor findings, and any budget amendments to the public via the district's website. Again, that is also the deadline in accordance with state legislation, and it has Again, that is also the deadline in accordance with state legislation, and it has to be seven days before the public hearing. Then we go right into the rounds with questions in the board logs, back and forth, and that will kick off on April 7th, the 14th, the 26th. So we have, on April 7th, I'm sorry, we have the traditional public budget hearing. On Thursday, April 14th, we have the budget deliberation sessions, round one. On Tuesday, April 26th, the finance committee meeting and the budget deliberation session. And I'll stop there, because we'll probably remind you all again of these dates, again in March, and I'll keep going over them in April and in May, especially for our new board members, because this is one of our peak time of work, is around budget season. And with that, I'm going to do round robin again with questions, and I'll start to my right with Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Vice President. The question that I have, could you put up screen 10, please? While he's putting it up, I'll just continue first.
It's up.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a question. When it comes to the CIRS funds and the ARP funds that you know is going to run out on certain dates, with regard to fiscal responsibility, when it comes to, you know, how you're going to fund these positions that you created, or whatever these funds were used for, why don't we have a plan ahead of time, instead of thinking later on after it runs out, you know, how we're going to pay for these things? That's my question.
Right. We have been given a pretty strong directive from the state on how to utilize those funds. So that's why there's been so much discussion going back and forth, as far as what positions were actually put into these grants, are they expected to be continued on or not? The original thought was that, you know, they wouldn't be. However, there's been some positions that we've learned about, that perhaps, once they've been studied and reviewed, that they could continue on. But the fact is, is that if that is the decision by the superintendent, the deputies, et cetera, we have to prepare for that now. And to start understanding, what do we need to remove from our general fund now that's not performing, that if we believe that strongly in an initiative or a position to be moved into the general fund, something else has to leave the general fund in order to make up that difference. So you may recall that there is a process that we're going to be going through for program evaluations. That's one area. If a program is not performing, the program needs to be removed, and it needs to be replaced with something that is going to be performing better for our students. The other item is that we do know that we have open positions within our general fund, meaning that those positions are actually budgeted for, there's a salary that's tied to those positions, there's benefits that are tied to those positions. And if we don't need them, and we truly know we do not need them, then perhaps they should be removed and backfilled with some of these individuals that we feel that should go on, or that the superintendent and deputies feel that should go on. So we are looking at that already. It's a topic of discussion, pretty much, if not at every cabinet meeting, it's very regular, that we are reminding ourselves that we do have to prepare, we know that fiscal cliff will be there, and we have to start getting ready for it now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Powell, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. Go back to slide six. There is a lot more, you spoke a lot more to this slide than what's presented here, especially around transportation. Can you repeat what you said? Some alarm bells were going off when you spoke about transportation. Can you restate everything you said around that?
Sure. No cause for alarm at this point in time, because again, this is the executive run. All I simply stated was that the facts, as we know them to be, is that our transportation budget at this point in time is running at surplus, if you will, so it's meaning it's running better than budget, meaning that our expenditures are less than what we had budgeted. So as you are aware, what that means for the following year then, is that if you expend less, then the revenue for the following year then is going to be less. And what that means is that we really have to take a look at, first of all, why are we experiencing that kind of a surplus, which I know Chief Schmidt is already working on that? And then, what does it mean for the future, and how are we going to use that information then to adjust our budget for this year that we're planning for right now, so that we don't end up in that situation again, depending on the variables that caused it? So again, no reason for alarm, it's just that we know within the budget department that we need to make an adjustment, and we'll have an adjustment to the transportation aid figure. So what you're seeing on the executive run is not the figure we can work with. It's going to be less than that.
Okay. I appreciate that you're looking into the whys. The alarm bell that went off was when you used the word surplus. It's not surplus, it's just under budget.
You're actually right. It's running better than budget.
And it was the use of the word surplus that just pinged all over on the inside of my head. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. President Elliott?
Nothing other than just to thank the Vice President for bringing us participatory budget, even though I like the old budget. But I think that it helps the community, and looking forward to the webinar that's going to be training us on that budget. And so, just wanted to say thank you. Anything that brings the community involved and helps them to understand what we're doing, I want to give kudos to, so thank you so very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And we'll definitely go into participatory budgeting a little bit later on, but we are meeting to finalize what that's going to look like, and we will be using last year's budget so that folks in the community and in the schools, and our staff as well, and our students, and our families can really get acclimated to the tool and how to use it, and get more comfortable with it before we officially transition into a live, if you will. So I do want to thank our CFO and her team, because this was a really big undertaking.
Yes, it was.
And I would like to also thank the superintendent for agreeing to, again, coming together to move into this position for us. I do think, in the future, it will allow for greater input from our families, our students, and even our staff and our community members on how the district moves forward with the budget. But we're not quite there yet. We will be hopefully by next year, but this is where we're at right now. Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. And CFO Pierce, I think you answered my questions I had around the CIRS and ARP, and what some of those strategies look like as far as assessment. And I, actually, I'm looking at slide number 12, the academic plan alignment, and I recognize that the district is moving into trying to streamline the curriculum, update that. I think, what did we recognize, that we had like 20-year-old curriculum, or some of the nature, so I'm really excited that we're going to update that. And looking at slide 12 particularly, I'm wondering, in a correlation with the curriculum and these assessment tools that are mentioned here, our plan for sustainability, because sometimes we have different initiatives that come in, and then they're not sustained afterwards, or they change, and then the teachers' pedagogy has to change to accommodate a new curriculum, if that makes sense? So just wondering what we're doing to sustain and really embed this in the district plan.
So, good evening, thank you for the question. I think what we're really looking into is the program evaluation piece that has been lifted up. As we program evaluate things that we bring to the district, we identify what is working and what is sustainable. And as we've heard in a lot of times, we put our budget where our priorities are. If we find that a program is sustainable, then we allocate resources as such to keep it moving. If we find that a program is not working, then we do have to switch. But as we have a little bit of an opportunity to build capacity to identify what is sustainable, then we put our resources where our progress is, so to speak.
And just to add with what Dr. Black said, program evaluation is critically important, because we do have some things that are sacred cows in the district. So when you use that program evaluation model, it really just shows very clearly and articulated through the data that this just is not working. But there are some things that I imagine that we really like in the district, but they might not just have that value added that we need.
Exactly. And I guess that leads to this other part of the question, how long, or when do you make that determination, like, hey, this is not working? You know, you might not give something 15 years to determine it's not working, but in a short amount of time, you might determine that.
So we do have a number of metrics. Right now, we're looking at our existing programs. We're in the midst of doing program evaluation of all of our existing programs, to determine things that are already, that we've already invested in, if they've actually delivered what we say they've delivered, in terms of student achievement and student experience. For anything new that we're bringing on between program and or curriculum, we have between a three- and five-year cycle. And that really is going to attend to what our interim data says to us, and to what our, when our state assessments come back online, what our state assessments say to us. After about a two- or three-year cycle of implementation and fidelity, we get some preliminary data that we can actually either course correct for, so we see promising practices, and we course correct to implement fidelity, or we say we're not getting the residual, and now let's go out and start to begin the process to put something else in place. But we do have a three-to-five-year window before you can say something is absolutely not working, if we implement to fidelity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to actually start with Rebecca, and then I'll move to the other commissioners on Zoom. So Rebecca?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions come up, and I understand that this was kind of an overview, and that there will be more to come. But I was wondering, specifically with the financial plan, there is a note about the special education system upgrade, and it was recently, we were recently made aware that there, the current program was misanalyzing a lot of really important data. And so, as far as parent engagement is concerned, and so I'm wondering with the new focus, if there can be an emphasis on the public-facing and parent engagement parts of this system as we go forward, and what type of parent engagement is going to be involved in choosing those types of upgrades?
Okay, so, it does, do you mind coming up for that one? I am not as familiar with the, what we'll be out facing, if you will, with the new system, but we have our interim chief, Des Richmond, coming up.
Rebecca, can you repeat the question? I think we're all a little bit trying to understand what specifically you're talking about regarding like this budget presentation. What is the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. In the, I was just hoping for, in the items listed on the page, listing the financial plan, and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have the presentation, I didn't upload on Board Doc, so I was pulling it off of YouTube to the best of my ability. But there was, the special education system upgrade is listed as a financial plan, as part of the financial plan, one of the priorities. And I was just hoping to get a little more clarity, and it doesn't have to be answered now, but I just think it's important that there be parent engagement in choosing that upgraded plan.
Just for clarity, are you talking about the bullet, upgrading our special education management system bullet?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. No, it's okay. I just had Kelly pull up the presentation.
Okay. Now, I've got it. So, the management system is really a database system for us on handling our, the many documents that we have, like on IAPs, and being able to pull better data when it comes to the related service log, and to be able to capture quickly any kind of, being able to bill for Medicaid reimbursement a lot faster with accurate data. We've had presentations by the vendor, we're now in process of putting together all the data that they need to, on the backend, load up the system, and hopefully, we'll be up and running with it sometime in the fall, or I'm hoping in the fall, but we'll see how it goes. So it, as far as the parent engagement part, I think it will, I'm hoping that, I believe that the system will be able to notify parents easier than the system currently. Right now, we're having trouble with some of the email systems, with the frontline IEP system, with emails for parents, so we're trying to, you know, ensure that this new system does all that it's supposed to do, and it's pretty amazing what it can do. We can literally pull up a related service log on any student within seconds and know if the services have been delivered. So that part will be good.
Rebecca?
So I appreciate that, but I would just encourage to make sure that all of these elements are vetted, and to make sure that it is improving the communication, because in the end, the parents are the ones who really need that, especially in the special ed department. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I just actually have a follow-up, Desiree, before you have a seat on that special ed piece. Pre-K through K transition, it's my understanding when pre-K, our students in pre-K have an IEP, it doesn't transition to K. And so, what often happens is they're transitioned to the K side in RCSD, and then even though they had an IEP, they could have had it for three and four years old, it doesn't transfer with them, so they don't receive the services until we evaluate them. Is there a way to track the IEP in EPK, UPK, as they are entering K, to provide those services, until then they are reevaluated for a new IEP with this system?
So I just want to make sure I understand that, because any preschool student with a disability, if the team does look at that student coming into kindergarten, and if they qualify for a CSC meeting, that's held, and an IEP is created.
But it takes months. I've talked to lots of pre-K parents who did the transition from pre-K to kindergarten, I've talked to pre-Ks, they have highlighted this as an issue that they have been trying to advocate for. Parents especially, because it takes months to get that meeting going, and until that meeting happens, and a new IEP or a service meeting is had, that student loses out on the services that they were getting consistently in EPK or UPK in the transition over.
Well, then, I would ask that I really look into that and get better data on that, because that's not what I'm being told, and if that's happening, I obviously need to address that.
Okay, thank you. No, I'll definitely reach out and get some information, and we'll address it that way. Thank you. Commissioner, Rebecca, did you have any more questions?
I just had one more, if that's okay.
Okay, is it for Desiree? Can she have a seat? Are you done?
No, she couldn't.
Okay, thank you, Desiree.
Thank you, Desiree. So on page eight, on the budget assumptions, I just, I'm questioning a reduction in staff positions as a budget assumption, when we are so understaffed in so many of our programs. And I'm wondering where that, as part of an overall assumption, where that is coming from, and is there a way to just be transitioning people to different positions or different schools, as opposed to making it a main, a main budget assumption that we're reducing staff? And that's my last question, so thank you.
I always appreciate your questions, not a problem. So a couple of things. First of all, we need to think about what exactly are we going to be reducing? As I stated earlier, there are a number of positions within the budget itself that are not actually filled with a person, but yet that position carries an expenditure for salary, an average salary, it's not even the starting salary, but an average salary plus benefits. So there's a cost, but there's no body in the position. So that's one area that we could take a look at and see, are all those open positions truly needed or not? We have a structural deficit that is also in need of, as we've been saying, eradicating, to just absolutely remove it from the budget to become sustainable. We need to do that. As a matter of fact, at the last Moody's interview that I participated in, Moody's specifically asked me, what are you doing about your structural deficit? And a way that we need to overcome our structural deficit is to, by right-sizing the district, which Dr. Jallow has been speaking about since the beginning of her time with us. And again, it's pretty much just common sense. When you are expending more money than what you're bringing in, you need to correct that action. So it may not be actual people, or it could be a realignment of people to the positions again, so that if there is a need in a certain area, and we do have the capacity to be able to fill those positions, and I know Chief Miller will be getting into that this evening in his presentation a little bit, but again, it's this evening in his presentation a little bit. But again, it's perhaps just looking at your current workforce and applying what you do have into the areas of need, which can be possible. Or again, it's the process of removing positions that are just expenses, if you will, and not people. That's a way that we can correct it. So by all means, academic outcome is going to be the focal point, and we just have to use our resources wisely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rebecca. Commissioner Adams?
First of all, let me state that personally, I would, one of my goals for the district is for it to probably be the most fiscally responsible district in the state. Because when I started here, we was in the whole unbelievably record. It was just ridiculous. So I, I get that. But I just don't want us to embrace what was said about transportation. We're spending less money than budgeted. I don't want us to try to, and this affects next year budget, this year, what we spend this year. I don't want us to embrace trying to duplicate that, because services were cut, services weren't available, days were missing, that we missed school. There's a lot of factors in, when you look at the reasons for spending less. And so the community has said that transportation is a big issue. So I just don't want us to try to duplicate spending less on transportation. And that, that's all I got.
May I respond?
Absolutely.
First of all, it's so good to see you, Commissioner Adams. It's so good to see you. The, what I want to, to, again, is just to work with fact. So when we work with facts, the fact remains that our transportation expenditures are, at one point, they're running three times higher than average across the state. And so there's something that is not right with that, with that fact. And we have to take a look at that and understand why. What is causing that kind of a variance from other school districts across New York State? It's not that anyone is proposing to use whatever happened this year and apply it to next year. It's more to say, this has been an ongoing trend for many years that our expenditure is at such a level that it's being noticed by the State Education Department, and rightfully so. So what do we need to do? How can we make adjustments to still provide the service to our children, but then to do so in an economic way? We have a transit system within our city. Why is it that other cities are able to use that system in their city for their school district? And yet, in our particular case, our expenses overall with all of our vendors far exceed what any other school is experiencing. So that's really what we're looking at, is what is causing that difference? It's not to say that any of those savings that we experienced this year is something that we will implement. We just have to take a look at it, fully understand it, and then be able to take action on it.
Commissioner Adams, did you have any follow up to that?
Okay.
Okay. You all set? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. Just quickly, wanted to uplift just what President Elliott said earlier about Vice President LeBron. I just wanted to say thank you for the, the work that you're doing and the push that you're making to include the, the community in all of these discussions. So kudos to your leadership, and thank you. And also, thank you to Carleen. Thanks for the work that you've done. I do have a couple of questions just about some of the budget assumptions. And I can't remember which page that was on, but one of the budget assumptions is that we have this continuing trend of declining enrollment. And I guess my thoughts are, as we prepare for this next year's budget, how are we going to stop the hemorrhaging of these students leaving our district? And it has to be more than just closing schools or shuttering programs. What are we doing as a district to take measurable steps to actually, to ensure that we have the type of programming in district that kids want to stay in or that families want to stay in? And I did see that there was a, I think on page three, the feasibility and zone configuration that was listed. And I'm, I'm looking to better understand maybe some of the costs or cost savings that might be realized with potential shifts to neighborhood based schools, as well as maybe neighborhood based community schools. And it just seems to be that this would be a shift that we would need to take in terms of our infrastructure in order to stop the decline of our, the declining student population that we're seeing. And I think that then that needs to drive any academic plan that would naturally follow. So more, more so, those are comments more than anything else, but I would like to see what we're doing to address the actual infrastructure of our district in next year's budget, so that we can then start working on the, the academic stuff.
So a few things, Commissioner Malloy, thank you for those comments slash questions and thoughts. Through the Teaching and Learning Department, they are focusing on a few things that are pertinent to your questions. Certainly, high school redesign and making sure that we have secondary schools that provide offerings that are attractive and meaningful to our scholars and represent the things that they're interested in learning that will help them answer the question, what is it that I want to be when I grow up? We also are, through our Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships, she is launching an initiative where we're actually reaching out to parents who have left our school district, and we're surveying, and we're trying to get information to see what is it that caused them to leave? What is it that would make them want to come back? And how can we actualize that? I think also as we continue to make shifts to becoming K5, 6, 8, 9, 12, where we can have our pre-K students, we lose, we have a really solid enrollment as it relates to pre-K, but then we lose students as they transition into kindergarten. We've got to fortify and work with our schools and with the placement office to ensure that pre-K students can stay in their schools and not move. And that does go towards speaking about how you can stay in the area that you live in. And so moving in that direction, I know there is a lot of interest on the board with talking about neighborhood schools. And as we continue that community engagement over the weeks and months to come, that we'll be able to have those conversations to see how might we more purposefully move in that direction? Those are just a few things.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to turn it over to President Elliott. I do have some questions, but she did want to do a follow up.
Right, just a follow up with what the comments that Commissioner Adams, oh, with that Commissioner Adams made in, to your comments about our transportation costs being three times higher in the state. One of the things that we did is that we made exceptions to the 1.5 eligibility. And we made exceptions because, you know, for the safety of our kids and to ensure that they're going to be in school. So I don't know how much that played a part of that, but I don't apologize for us doing that, because it got them in school and kept them safe. What I'm excited that may have happened is, is that it looks like the transportation bill is going to get some traction, and that we can cover our costs if it's at a 0.5 threshold. So I'm excited about that. And so we may be able to see, depending on when that bill is passed, see some increase in revenue for that. So, you know, I, I, I don't apologize for us making exceptions. We needed to have those babies in school. You know, we needed to make sure that they were safe. We need to make sure that, you know, parents who work, you know, can go to work and they've had transportation for their children. So, you know, that probably is one of the factors that's causing the increase in the transportation. But, you know, I think that was something that we needed to have, needed to have done. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Elliott. I'm going to call on Commissioner Howell, who also wants to have an additional follow up.
Sure, thanks. If I thought some principals were watching, I would go into a whole riff about how we need to develop a mentality, a market mentality, and, and actually actively recruit our families into their neighborhood schools. And that's a role that the principals and staff at the schools are best equipped to do, to, to market their school, to go door to door to the kids that live in their neighborhood and encourage families to choose their school. But I doubt anyone, any principals are listening to a finance committee meeting, so.
They actually do that.
Yes, yes, they do.
Well, if you heard me, like, from my mom's, they're parents, right?
Yeah, going to the schools.
They got everything, yeah.
Right, so that plays into the conversation about, you know, the charter schools. It talks about the neighborhood school feasibility. And it was, it's always been my hope that our, that once charter schools became a reality in our community, that, that our school principals would recognize that they needed to take an active role in, in recruiting our families to their schools. But my question has to do with the, on screen five bullet, I'm sorry, page eight bullet five. Can you talk to me about how dynamic your budget process is or isn't? Because we did just learn that the, that some of the effort to reduce our footprint was being retracted or stepped back from. So, and I'm guessing that some of the budget assumptions were that we would be combining some of our elementary schools.
We did, we actually did not place any reduction within the budget, because you don't want to, just as Vice President LeBron has said in the past, you don't want to spend your money before it's actually in the bank. It's the same type of thing here. We did not want to recognize the savings before they were actually incurred. Because had we done that, the, the gap that was presented in the long range plan would have looked much different. It would have been greatly reduced if we actually had gone forward with all those closures that we originally spoke about. So again, we err on the side of being conservative, both with expenditures and revenues.
Then can you describe what bullet five really is about then? I mean, if it, if it wasn't about the consolidations, can you describe further what the assumption was that you were making as you built the budget?
We are actually making an assumption that in the 22, 23 budget, consideration will be made towards the reduction in the district's footprint. So we want to, again, assume that that's the direction that we're moving in, but we would have to take a look to see what exactly is that going to look like. We want to continue to move in that direction. We realize we have to go into that direction, but we have not placed any kind of expenditures as a physical number or a hard number within the budget at this point in time.
Okay, so it's, so what you're saying is that it's, it's a factor that has been, is present, but has had zero impact on the development of this budget because we don't know.
You're absolutely correct. Thank you for saying it that way. It's very clear.
Thank you. And I have several questions, but I'm going to start backwards from the previous conversation. I just want to uplift that our principals and our staff actually do watch our, almost all of our meetings, actually. So kudos to them, because I don't know if I would be in that position, if I would do that on a Tuesday night or Thursday. But just even in saying principals, they are their best advocates of their schools. But my experience is, we have, we don't even allow them to do the actual enrollment of students. So even if they went door to door and found students, we then have to, like, make them go through the placement process, and then it goes into the managed choice system and process. And it's a chaotic, I don't want to make it, I don't want a community to make any assumptions that our principals have not tried or have not been advocates for their school and tried to enroll their students. Sometimes it's multiple families from the same student, right, and new students that are coming in from that family, and our own placement has said they can't be placed there. So I just want to uplift that. But a couple of pieces, the physical reduction in the district's footprint, we haven't even returned buildings for schools that we closed last year and the year before. And I just want to highlight that, because even with this proposal, we weren't going to reduce our physical footprint. There was no plan to return the buildings back. Like, I just want to uplift that we were going to put all these families through this chaotic situation, and there was no mention of us returning the building back physically to the city and being done with that building. So I don't see where the physical reduction would happen there. But if we're going to have conversations about reducing our footprint, that we start with the schools we already closed, that we still retain those buildings. Like, I don't know what's happening at School 44 or 52, but if we're still in possession of those buildings, that's how we reduce our physical footprint. We're going to have to have a plan to transition those buildings back before we start re-engaging in conversations about any closures or mergers. And I just want to put that out there. So I do have several, and I'll, if you need me to stop, I'll stop. But I do want to have a cost analysis in reference to the full time employees that are budgeted, but that are open, where we don't have a physical body. Because I want to caution that sometimes those positions are harder for us to then re-put them in the budget. So understanding how many positions are open, how many positions are not filled and budgeted for, and what that looks like, whether it's in central office or each of our schools. If we can have that analysis, it doesn't obviously need to be tonight, because I don't think that there's any way to have that done tonight. I would like to understand that, both as part of this budget process as we move forward. And I do think it's going to require a collaboration from our CFO and our Chief of Human Capital. So I am making that request. I just want to uplift to the, I keep saying this every single time, anytime ASR, Cresta and ASR dollars are talked about, the fact that, so Crest and ARP, sorry. Anytime we talk about these dollars and we're talking about positions that are being hired, you know, I have said this multiple times, I'm not necessarily interested in moving these soft money, if you will, grant dollars, temporary dollars into the hard lines. I hear that you're having conversations about how that looks and happens, but I just want to remind folks that seniority will take place, and that's something we haven't discussed or brought to the forefront, that as folks are being hired, in two years from now, three years from now, they will have seniority over other people that we hired in positions we actually may have hired those people to do. And there's going to be some bumping that happens with these temporary dollars with folks that we hired in our general fund. And that is something I didn't take into consideration before, but I just want to put it on record and for the community to understand that this is going to have some impact in that, too, as we move forward. We saw it with mid-year cuts, where we were cutting in one scoop, but the reality is, first in, last out, it really impacted all of our schools and made a big shift. So I want us to be mindful of these decisions that are being made as we move forward. In regards to the structural deficit, I would like a, I guess, an analysis of all that is entailed within the structural deficit. We keep talking about a reduction in footprint, reduction in staff, but there are other long term expenditures in the structural deficit that we won't ever be able to tap in our lifetime. And I don't want the community to be confused that it's just this large, massive amount of staffing, because every school that I have walked into, and I will name all the schools I've been to on Thursday in a list and give them kudos, but every school I have walked into is struggling right now with staff shortages, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's with paris and TAs, whether it's clerks, security, sentries. Every single school, I have not walked into a school that said, we're in good standing with staffing and we're doing great. They're doing as best as they can, and I want to give them props for that, because they are juggling and multitasking in different roles. But when we have this conversation around structural deficit and reducing the cost, there has to be this crosswalk analysis of how many FTEs are in open, unfilled positions that are budgeted for with the benefits versus actual shortages of staff. Because I think it's very confusing to talk about these things and then say, we have to reduce staff, when, again, every single school I've walked into is struggling right now because of staff shortages. So I just had to say that, because it's driving me nuts that we keep saying that we need to right size the district. I don't even know what that means at this point, because if we took into account schools, they're struggling, they don't have the staffing. And if I look in other areas, they're not struggling. So I just, I need to understand that in a greater depth. The 1,200, before I get to the 1,200 number, because we had this conversation even earlier today. I do want to, when I talk about using data and information that exists out here in this community, when we're talking about our school, I want to understand if there's been any even look at or an analysis to the RG&E crisis that's upon us at this time. So if you're not aware, RG&E has stated, because of supply and demand for natural gas, people's RG&E bills have increased up to 50%. We will not be exempt from that as a school does. We will not be exempt from that as a school district. So people are seeing their bills go from $300 to up to $1,000 for some households. We, again, as R C S D, who utilizes our RG&E, we will not be exempt from that. It's gotten to the point where the governor today issued a statement saying that it needs to be investigated, where people will not be able to pay those large, or, how will that impact us? Are you guys all aware of that? Have we looked at what the impact of that increase will be? RG&E is saying it is a supply and demand issue, point-blank period, it's the cost of doing business. So I want us to be mindful, again, of what's happening out around us, but that will directly impact us in our budget. And lastly, the 1,200 greater than what we were in terms of, and just to recap, the state runs had us listed with 1,200 more students than we actually had in the district. Therefore, we were budgeted for our foundation aid for 1,200 more seats than we actually have filled, which obviously created a discrepancy in our budget. And I just, again, I will ask, how did this happen? Where does this happen from? Who gave the numbers to the state within this system? And how was it caught? I need to understand that procedurally. And if you don't have answers today, I'm okay, but I will ask that again in the budget, because I do think it needs to be on record, what happened and what steps are being taken to address that, because that's huge. That's, we're putting ourselves, potentially, in a situation where we're going to have a financial shortfall over a discrepancy in a number that is critically important to our budget.
We are meeting. I was just made aware of it with me coming back. So I had an initial email conversation with Carleen and with Janelle, and we are meeting, and we will be prepared to give you all of those details, to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. And then, our CFO, do you, do you have a response to the RG&E at this time, or?
Yeah, I actually have a response to the other item, too, regarding the structural deficit.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, with regard to the RG&E, we have been meeting, gosh, I can't even remember how long ago now, time is flying so quickly, but every other week, I meet with the facilities team. And the topic that's, that we go over every single meeting, the topics that we review are, how are we doing with PPE? How is our, how are our expenditures being offset? Or how are we being assisted by Monroe County? Do we need more money there? Are we okay? The second item we go over is, how can we be more efficient when we're looking at operations from a standpoint of, do we need to centralize certain expenditure so the responsibility's not on the buildings and we can gain more from volume discounts, that type of thing? And lastly, the other thing that we go over is absolutely our utility costs. How are we doing compared to what was budgeted? And so it's an ongoing meeting. We have been keeping our fingers on the pulse. We do have a consultant that we work with. We had asked him several months ago, you know, should we be locking in at a rate at that point in time? And at that point in time, you know, there was a period where things shifted back a little bit, when it came down to fuel, et cetera. The prices declined, and then now, obviously, now they're increasing again. So we did not lock in. We belong to a BOSI consortium for a portion of those expenditures as well. And so we have been listening and working with people and trying to pick up on what do we need to do, how, what are the forecasts by the experts that are out there. We are also putting backup plans in place for, should we need additional money, because we are only, you know, now in February? What's the rest of the year projected to look like if we're going at this rate? What is worst-case scenario that we could imagine? And then plan for that, and then adjust accordingly as each month goes by. So we are on top of that. The other thing I just wanted to say is that when we think about the structural deficit, we tend to focus in on the expenditure side of the budget, and our budget is two sides, right? So if we, if we were willing to be creative in revenue generation, what do we have, such as the buildings that you mentioned, as assets that we could use to generate revenue? What could we do with our assets to, you know, we've talked about possibly, is there a way of working, for instance, with the county through our Oasis program, where then, if there was a need from the county to have individuals go through a program to obtain degrees, et cetera, skills that they need? Is there a way that we could work in partnership with others so that we charge a tuition, if you will? Is there a need that's not being met that we could fill and charge for that need, that service? So we need to, do we need to think, as Commissioner Rosa has said, think outside the box, redesign, reimagine the way we're doing education and how we're doing business in education? So if we keep our minds open to that as well, there may be some possibilities. And Leslie is actually absolutely correct with regard to the enrollment figures. There is a group of individuals that will be pulled together, because the fact is, is that at this point in time, there's one form that needs to be completed. And on that form, the individual collecting the data on that form has to receive input from 14 different individuals, which is a tad bit, it needs to be revamped, right? Does that seem like it makes sense when it seems like it should be going through one centralized individual to make sure the data is accurate, it's verified, and then it can be sent into the state? So the entire process is going to be reviewed, to see where we can gain efficiencies, gain in accuracy, and then we'll bring our findings back, absolutely. Because this was, it was a lesson learned. And I have to say, too, that, again, if it's not been the entire time she's been here with us, this is something that Dr. Jalloh had asked that we focus in on a long time ago, and said, "You need to take a look at your data integrity." And it proved, once again, that she absolutely was correct, and here we are.
Okay, thank you for that. And data integrity has definitely been a hot topic for us for a while now. Is there any other questions from commissioners before we move on to discuss board priorities? I'm looking at the screen. Dr. Jalloh, nothing? Any commissioners over here? All right, thank you so much to the CFO and to our superintendent.
You're very welcome, thank you.
For this budget analysis and forecast.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have a document for the board priorities, so I just want to go over very quickly. We can spend some time talking about it here. We won't have a lot of time, because we do have some other presentations that we need to still do briefly. However, I think what I will do is just put in a plug now and ask that if there are some board priorities that you, yourself individually, as the commissioner, have, if you can email them to, I'll have them email to our board clerk, Kalia, because she does support staffing for the finance. I know that Commissioner Malloy and Commissioner Simmons tonight highlighted food services, you know, food services comes up every single year as a hot topic issue. But until we actually put some bite into that or some collective agreement to put some money towards that, we're going to continue to have the same secular conversation, circular conversation, over and over. And I do think that is something that is worthy of us as a board to direct the administration to say, "This is a board priority." In the past, we focused on social-emotional support. I do think that still needs to be a point of board priorities and support, because we're not there where we need to be for our students for the social-emotional support pieces. But again, if there are other things that you want to think of, we can all email them to Kalia. We will put together a list and kind of see naturally if there are some topics that already have, you know, more than four supports. And certainly, we can bring it back and then just do a conversation to do the, if you will, final document. This will help the administration as we move forward and as they move forward with their budgeting. I just want to be mindful that we do have to, this year, align it with Dr. Jalloh's fiscal and academic plan and the strategic plan. We're required to do the alignment and be in alignment with the superintendent. But again, I do think that we can fit those things in under the current strategic academic plan, if we are strategic enough ourselves, and how we word it and fit it in there. So are there any questions at this time regarding that? Everybody's clear? If you can all do that, actually, by the end of next week. I know that it's break week coming up, but that will give us the opportunity, by next Friday, to then review it over the weekend and then come up with a document the following Tuesday, when we go into the budget conversations and the budget hearing. That would be great. And, oh, let's see, I am going to, is someone here to present the Oracle Cloud ERP? Yes. Okay, thank you.
This is, this is Mr. John Parsons. He's part of the IMNT department.
And thank you so much, John, for coming in and presenting. So this was a request made, just to give an update on where we are at with the Oracle Cloud and the updates to our antiquated systems that we're always kind of talking about in the antiquated way. So I'm going to turn it over to you, John. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, board and RSD, R C S D community. Good evening. This is my first time presenting to the board, so I'm going to give a quick overview of myself, so you have understanding where I'm coming from. I've been with the district two and a half years now, but I've been a project manager for over 23 years, and I am a certified project management professional, so I have credentials in the area. I also have a bachelor's in math and computer science and a master's in computer science, and I am a certified practitioner in change management as well. So that's a quick introduction to myself. I'm here to give a quick overview of the Cloud ERP project that we've been working on for a while, and just give a quick status here at this point. I'm not going to go over the agenda line by line here, but those are the topics I'm going to talk about briefly. Just to give an overview of what we're talking about, yes, this is an antiquated system. This diagram represents what the financial management system looks like. PeopleSoft environment is over 20 years old at this point. It was last updated in 2008 and 2009. And there's been no updates from, any releases from the vendor at this point since that time. So we're running on old software, old processes and so forth. I'm not going over this in detail, but it just gives you an idea. There's a lot of other systems integrated with PeopleSoft, information going in, information coming out, and there's also a lot of manual processes or things that we'd like to fold into the new system. The new system is going to be a full replacement, is not an upgrade, as I've heard some people calling it. We are completely eliminating PeopleSoft and going to a new system that is an Oracle-based system that's in the cloud, so that'll eliminate some of our internal support as well. The next slide gives a similar view of the human capital management system, which is also in PeopleSoft, and same type of comments. There's manual activities here, as well as integration with other systems. There's also some other areas that we may want to integrate that we're doing manually with some other systems to support them. So both of these diagrams show that this is a large effort we're undertaking, not only with the software, but the business process that's involved with that. So that kind of leads into this slide of, what is this project? It is a project to replace our financial management systems, our human capital management systems, and I emphasize plural, because we do have multiple systems, not just PeopleSoft, that are planned to be eliminated or merged somehow into the new environment. We're also looking at the, what we've been calling learning, but it's professional development for our staff that's tied in to the systems as well in an integrated way. All R C S D employees and staff in some way are going to be impacted by this change. If you think about that, anybody that touches the system to look at payroll, look at benefits in any way, shape, or form, that's in addition to Chris's group with the human capital management activities and Carleen's group with the finance activities. Everybody's going to be impacted in some way. And a couple points of emphasis, this is not an IT project. I want to emphasize, this is a business transformation project. We are transforming the business and the way they work in the systems and the business processes associated with them into a new system, moving old process to something new and modern, moving manual processes, in as many cases as possible, into something that's new and automated as well. So along with that is the fact that we'd like to improve the business process. We want to realize all the benefits that come with that. And in addition to that is organization change management activities to help make sure that we are successful. This next slide gets at leadership that we have for this project to help with governance, oversight, high-level decisions and approvals. And Carleen Pierce, our CFO, Chris Miller, our Chief of Human Capital Management, and Glenn Vanderwater, who's not here, is our executive sponsor from IMNT, are the key people involved with, Deputy Superintendent Janelle Morris and Kathleen Black as well. Next is our core team that's involved, basically, representation from the different areas that are involved. We meet on a regular basis to discuss activities, decisions, approvals, and sharing communication from the project out to the individual groups that are being impacted and are working on the project, and information coming back into the project teams. So with this slide, we're talking about the overall health of the project. At this point, we are in a good situation. However, we're still early in the project in a lot of ways. I highlighted two areas in yellow, resources and change management. Resources, we're still building some of the backfill and other support needs we have, needs for. In change management, we're actively doing some activities in this area right now, but it's new to almost everybody I talked to in the district. A lot of people don't even understand what change management is, what it's about. So I'm expecting some barriers and resistance and other activities there. And the fact that we're just getting started, there's some hurdles to overcome, to put it bluntly, I guess. Summary of some initial accomplishments at this point, we've had a project kickoff in November of last fall, and since then, we've been doing some planning to get us off the ground. We've done some discovery work, in fact, that's still continuing, to lead into some design and design discussions. We've initiated some governance activities and project oversight. We've also had a redesign of our chart of accounts system that we currently, or I guess I should say, the chart of accounts model that we have in the current PeopleSoft system, so that we're in a better position going forward and to meet all the requirements for the state and so forth in the new system. So there wasn't a major redesign, but nonetheless, it was a redesign. We also started with our partners, Oracle Consulting Services, talking about how are we going to know we're successful when we go live, and talking about key performance indicators, and what does that mean for our businesses when we go live? What are we going to measure to say we're successful? So those key indicators, as long with the organization change management, should really point to us being successful when we go forward. Part of our tracking is around issues, and we have known current issues, so that's good at this point. This slide is representing a overview of a possible timeline, and I say possible, it's draft at this point. draft at this point. I mentioned we're still in the early stages of design. Somewhere around the late March to early February, or excuse me, early April timeframe, we are going to have a better idea of where we are from a design perspective, from what I talked about earlier with the scope, all the different manual processes, integration points and so forth, will know more where some of those things stand, how much work do we really have, and you'll have a better idea of what timeframe we're going towards for a go-live, moving into production. A lot of different variations have been talked about at this point, a phase one, a phase two, to get everything that we need to fully implement a complete system. There's also some things that have been identified already that are generating change requests, change from the original scope we had in mind. So those need to be factored in. Do we actually implement those, or how do those actually get integrated into the, the project plan? Some cases, we may have to put those on the table and handle those in the future as well. So those are going to be handled on a case-by-case basis. So again, we should have a better idea of where we are on the timeline, probably in the April timeframe. So this slide goes along with the timeline. We're trying to put milestones in place. We have some milestones when we have, on our current plan, where the, what Oracle, our partner, is calling process playbacks, or I have on the slide here prototypes. We'll have one available for initial go-around in April, another one in June, and a third one in September. These times may spread out depending on where the production timeline goes, and there's going to be probably, excuse me, two more after what's on here planned right now, one for systems integration, final test of where we are, and another for a user acceptance test before we go live. So again, we kicked off with Oracle Consulting Services November 1st, and we've been working with defining detail ever since then. This slide I'm using to introduce something, again, driving into organization change management, something new here at the district, but I'm referring to as reference at this point. This is a communication site that we put together to advertise the entire project out to the employees and staff of the district. It's available to everybody now. It's been available since even before the kickoff started. It's integrated with the activities. It will be updated over time. The intent is to share information about the project, what's changing, what we know about the project and so forth. So there's key messaging out there. There's already some frequently asked questions type information, a way to ask questions so that we can have a loop back on giving people information that they're asking for, what are we doing with the project, some news articles and so forth. The intent, again, is to keep people informed of what's going on with the project, what do they need to know? When we know more about the timelines, that detail will be out there as well. Again, there is some key messaging out there now that we have quotes from our executive leadership team, what they're expecting, and over time, we will be changing the content, maybe have new messaging out there, but the intent, it's there, it's available, and I would encourage anybody to take a look at the site and check back often. Just to give you an idea of what it looks like, it, oops. The, this is essentially the homepage of the site, gives you a little bit of information, and all the pictures that you're seeing here are clickable links to additional information, and there's information below those as well to get to the frequently asked questions information as well as some other key areas, for example, the email that people can use to submit questions back and so forth. And that concludes my quick summary of where we are at this point. The next update, we probably should have more details for you, but it's still early in the project, and we're working very hard at this point.
Thank you. I do know that Commissioner Simmons has a question.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I'm excited about the KPI and the change management. We know that anything changing comes with that resistance, and so that's 101. With this, I was looking at, at this, and I'm excited also to see that there's messaging and keeping people informed on where the project is so that it's not just this like, whoa, what's happening here? I guess my question is capacity building, will it be beyond the FAQ forms and things of that nature? Is there like a concerted effort for capacity building of the staff that'll be utilizing? Because that's everyone, and that's huge. So how, what does that look like, I guess, the capacity building plan?
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. Capacity for the team that's working on the project or capacity in some other way?
Let me clarify for you, sure. So this will be executed by, this will impact all employees, will need to access this piece, and you may not be the person, because I think you're managing the project. I'm wondering for the district-wide, like, so the average person, if a classroom teacher, staff member from any part of the organization needs to use this, if they require training and support and that nature, what does that plan look like or has that been developed?
That has not been developed yet. That it will be part of our organization change management plan and actually a strategy and plan. We're starting to put that strategy together now, and a plan will follow out after that. We have some interview, stakeholder interviews going on right now. We're also going to build a change agent network so that we have a web out into the district, probably starting with a core first and add more later, but that's going to be our tentacles out to the staff as much as we can get. So we'll have information go out and coming back to gather some needs as well as letting them know what's going on and what to expect and so forth. So to answer your question, in summary, the training plan is yet to be developed, but there will be training for everybody in some form.
Awesome, thank you so much.
President Elliott?
I am very excited about this program. I'm sort of jumping, you sort of hit me at hello with this, with this platform, but talk about the difference, the advantage of this platform versus what we currently have now.
The, the big advantage of what we have now is software and hardware installed at the district here that we have to maintain. Going into the cloud, Oracle is going to maintain that for us. They're having the infrastructure, the software is there, so we will not have to have that type of maintenance and have to update hardware and software on a regular basis. The difference is because it's in the cloud, cloud-based applications, we will get quarterly updates from Oracle instead of waiting 12, 13 years to do an upgrade like we are now essentially. We will have updates basically four times a year. Could be new, new functional changes, it could be changes to what we have in place, could be a variety of different things happening. We have to be ready to take those, migrate them into production, and that also includes the, the business being able to transform, to take advantage of new functions, new features that come in and use them in their day-to-day activities as well. So we're going to have a team in place to look at these releases, and it's going to be a joint team from the IT and the business teams to make sure that we're making the right choices moving forward with them.
Can you talk a little bit about the barriers that you mentioned?
I'm sorry?
Barriers. You mentioned barriers, and you said you were being blunt about that. So what does that mean in terms of, is it people, is it systems? I mean, you don't have to give specifics, but...
All of the above.
Okay.
There's barriers everywhere you look, and some of that is people don't want to change, people like doing things the old way. There's a lot of things that we need to identify and have a course of action to get us to the successful end going forward. So that's part of the change management effort we're doing and a lot of other things that we're trying to identify moving forward.
All right, so I'm, I'm looking for the superintendent to help persuade, you know, those people who have an issue with this and then whatever systems that we need to move out of the way to, that we are persuasive in trying to show the advantage of this kind of, of a system, you know? And I'll just say from, from, from the days, we need everybody to be on board with this. This is going to help us to be more efficient and effective with our services. We can no longer be in the old days where, you know, things were done by hand or, you know, with these inefficient systems. And so I'm asking that everybody get on board because this is going to make our ability to be able to process our human capital as well as our finance system a little bit more efficiently. And so I'm just asking us from the days that we get that done. And I would also ask, is there an academic management system? Do you know if there's one? I'm thinking that we probably need to have an academic management system. Yeah, student information system, but, yeah, but is it, is it as efficient as what I'm hearing with this Oracle system?
We do have learning management systems and student information systems that we utilize, and we are continually upgrading, I mean, Power School. We're continually updating our usage of it. We, when used appropriately and when we train appropriately as part of our academic plan, we are able to get a lot of information from it.
I, I will add that Power School is in the cloud as well, so it has some advantages that this financial and human capital system will as well currently.
All right, I'm going to actually wrap up now because we do have to move on, and we do have an executive session with guests coming in today. So with that, though, I do just want to say thank you to you and your team and the IT department, and certainly this will be a topic again as we continue to move forward with the implementation because I imagine there will be hiccups and additional questions that come up, but I definitely just want our board commissioners and our community and our school communities to hear what's happening with this transition, because it is a big transition. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm going to move right into the next piece, which is the new format for ARP and CRESTA-related resolutions. So Carrie is going to be presenting from home, but there is going to be an identifiable process for commissioners and for the community, if you're going to board docs to look at resolutions, that will help us identify which resolution is using ARP or CRESTA dollars, whether state or federal, and then also some linkages to where these fall under the actual ARP and CRESTA plans and priorities and strategic plan. So Carrie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you all for having me tonight, present to you on kind of an update that we have made to an existing system. So I am going to share my screen so that I can kind of take you through the mock-up. And so at the request of the boards, I think it was maybe four or six weeks ago, there was a request to be able to identify through the resolution process activities that were slated to be funded with either CERSA or ARP dollars. So a smaller group of us have met several times in the past couple of weeks and decided that what would be best is to build on or modify our existing system rather than build something completely new. So what we've done here is a mock-up of what you would see in future resolutions. So this is actually a resolution that was presented at the January 27th board meeting, and it was approved, but what, we've used it as our example for tonight. So what we're proposing is kind of similar to this section of the resolution that would come forward to you all in terms of identifying the strategic priority, except for resolutions that were slated to be funded with ARP or CERSA dollars.
Hey Carrie, I'm so, so sorry to interrupt. I know that you're sharing from Zoom. Unfortunately, it's too, it's too tiny for our commissioners to see from the days.
No problem.
Can you just be sure to send your, yeah, to blow it up larger if you can for the folks at home?
How's that?
As you explain, and then if you can also ensure to send your examples, and I will make sure the commissioners get it. If you want to just send, send it after the presentation, I'll make sure that everyone gets it on the days.
Thank you, because I was like, we can't see that, but also just for future reference, it should be in board docs because we are required by law to post what we're going to talk about 24 hours in advance. Thank you.
Okay, yep, no problem. I'm happy to send the documents along, the samples after the presentation tonight. So what, can you, you can all see it better now?
A little bit.
Okay, here, let me continue to blow it up. How's that?
That's a little bit better, but, yeah, but it's okay. Go ahead, Carrie, we'll, I'll make sure they get it.
Okay, no problem. So what you would see here would be a new kind of priority box where it would list the relief fund priority, remember there are seven, that the funds would be allocated under, so in this case, it would be priority six, which is district-wide infrastructure. And then this particular resolution pertains to CERSA Initiative A under the district-wide infrastructure priority. So then, kind of to follow up and do all, and follow through the linking to provide more information, you'd then be provided a cheat sheet, and I'm going to blow this up, too. So then what you do is you would go to the cheat sheet here, and you'd go down to priority six here, which is district-wide infrastructure, and then you could find CERSA A, Effective Use of Federal Funds, and you can see that in the federal relief spending plan where all of the detail lives, it can be referenced on page 19. So at the top of this cheat sheet, there's a hyperlink that will bring you to the relief funding plan. This is going to be really small when you see it, but I'll blow it up as well. And then you'd scroll down to page 19. And you'd be able to see here's Effective Use of Federal Funds, and then the resolution that was just put forward would pertain to this round one submission, staffing for grant implementation and monitoring. And then down here, you can see the intended outcomes of the initiative of Effective Use of Federal Funds, the research base that it links to, the alignment to district improvement planning, and then the connection to stakeholder feedback. So the idea would be that this process could also be reflected in the contract resolutions that are put forward, and I think where we left it was just maybe requesting a little bit further clarification of what exact type of information the board would be seeking that would be meaningful for the HC resolution. So that's kind of where, where we've landed on updating the resolutions to provide the information related to ARP and CERSA activity. And so I'm happy to take any questions.
Yep. Are there any questions from any of the commissioners? Online, do you see any hands up?
Yes, I see Commissioner Malloy's hand is up.
Oh, okay, Carrie, thank you. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Carrie, thank you so much, bravo. This is going to make everything so much clearer, so the clarity on this and the accessibility now for, for commissioners, so bravo. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, Carrie, thank you and your team again very much for compiling this and putting it out there. I do also believe the hyperlinks would be available to board docs for the public as well, so as they're going through resolutions and we are in our pre-reading, we'll be able to easily identify versus trying to go look for it through the ARP website of the RCSD site and go download each, yeah. So thank you very much again. So thank you very much again. I'm gonna move on to the next piece, which is, I already did the review for the upcoming budget events. So we're gonna move on. Chris, hold on, I'm gonna move through the other things and have you go last. That way, we can wrap up with you and then go right into executive. So I'll start with an easier conversation, which is the Board Liaisons to Pre-K EPK Community-Based Organizations. So with that, this had come up in the past before where our community-based organizations had reached out and asked for Board Liaisons to also be assigned to their organization, if you will. Because of the way that EPK, UPK are regulated through the Office of Children and Family Services, which is a little bit different than NICE that in our school systems, I have asked them to also put together some guidance for all of us so that we have clearly identified one contact person at the CBO, if you will, who would be the representative of that organization. And also to help us with coordinating conversations and even visits. We are not allowed to pop up in EPK, UPK programs as CBOs. Again, they're regulated through stricter regulations, if you will, because of the Office of Children and Family Services. So the conversation tonight is just really to give you all a heads up and to see if there's any objections from any of the commissioners. I did the calculations. There are about, if we divided them up equally, it's about three and a half. So there will be some who'll probably have three or four versus some who have three. But at minimum, it will increase our liaison schools, if you will, representations to CBOs or UPK, EPK programs by three, at minimum, three to four. So I just want to see if there's any objections from the commissioners. Again, this came up before, but then it kind of, the ball was dropped at some point and we never finalized it. So any objections? Okay, so.
I just want to know what that would look like for, because I'm with the pre-K and the parent program, what have you. So when you open that up, there's another gamut. So I have the seven assigned schools, but then the other programs. So just how that plays out.
Yeah, so these are, are yours from the parents' center? Are they community-based organizations or are they RCSD?
No, I believe they're RCSD, but it's the parent program. So that's the piece I'm trying to gain understanding. But we can maybe take it offline when we're looking at it. I don't mind.
Yeah, we could look at it. We want to make sure it's an equitable distribution. So we would definitely not bombard any commissioner with a larger number of representation than others. Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, so what will be the policy? Do we go through CALEIA? We want to visit one of these schools or what is the?
No, the community-based organizations, I have asked them to meet as a collective for the UPK, EPK programs and look at the Office of Children and Family Services regulation so that we have guidance around that. They will also give us who their contact person is. Remember, these are not our schools. This is an organization. We do contract with them for the education piece for three and four-year-olds. But they're not our school buildings. We actually have no authority as commissioners over there either. So I've asked them, I told them I would bring it up today to make sure there's no objections in the new business. That way, we can then move forward. Because there's no point in them meeting and giving us guidelines if there was an objection by commissioners to take on those additional roles. I do think it's a good benefit, especially parents will eventually transition from a community-based organization into RCSD. So it's gonna be critical that we start building positive relationships with them even before they enter our school community. But I have asked them to give us and identify who the contact's gonna be at each of the CBOs. Some of them may have multiple sites, but it's still one person to contact. For example, ABC Head Start, they have multiple sites, whereas Iberia only has one physical site for EPK, UPK. So they will identify who they want to be the contact for us as commissioners. So when you're assigned that school, you would get the assignment of the contact person. And then you would reach out to them to schedule a visit and so forth. And we also have to make sure there's no additional background checks required for us to visit in their CBO base. Again, they are ran by the Office of Children and Family Services Regulations, which are different than NICE regulations. And they're more strict than our regulations too. So there's also nap time and things like that that we cannot legally interrupt. So again, we have to work with them around their guidance and their regulations. But I have asked them to give us those guidance in advance so that we're all on the same page as we divide up the options.
So I.
Yeah.
Question. I just want to be clear, again, being new to the board, and this is something that we're creating. So we're gonna be assigned like three to four of these, you're saying, each commissioner? But we have to.
This is yes, based on where we, the current number of community-based organizations that currently have contracts for EPK, UPK within Monroe County, we would be getting about three to four, based on the numbers.
All right.
Let me just say, if that's something that you're not interested in taking on, then you don't have to take it on, you know, we could just split it up.
I'm not saying that, I'm just asking more questions so I have, we're clear, it's clarity.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and we haven't done this piece, but it has been asked for before. And we did have conversations about this and we did agree to it. I don't know what happened within the, it could have been the transition of superintendents, honestly. I think that's partly what happened, that there was a transition in leadership. And this was kind of one of those things that just the ball fell. But again, I have asked them to give us the guidelines and guidance so that we then can have a discussion on it. And we'll probably have some follow-up with them here in case there are questions that arise from commissioners. But obviously, it's gonna be a new process for us as well. So, all right, so that takes care of that. And then I'm gonna ask for a motion to reconsider the suspension appeal resolution from 2021, 22, Resolution Number 423. Second. Are there any questions? Legal, did you want to give some input on this one?
No, just a motion to reconsider because there were commissioners here today who did not vote. So the motion to consider is gonna be followed by the motion to amend.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Just one question.
Yes.
So does it, I'm looking at C and D and the resolution numbers, should they both be 423?
Yeah, one is the motion to suspend and one is to reconsider and one is to amend.
Right, let me just get the council's. You said we're talking about Resolution 423 and then 423 on C and D?
Right, to be safe, I would just call it 423 A and B.
Okay.
Can you do that, is that?
That would change the motion because the motion is to reconsider 423 and then the other one is to amend the same resolution of 423. So we wouldn't be changing the number unless you want to.
I think it's fine as is.
Did you get, do you understand?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor? I think the voting is up on the screen.
We need a verbal vote as well. You said all those in favor, but no one.
Oh, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, so motion to amend the suspension appeal resolution 2021, 22, Resolution Number 423. Can I get a motion for that?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Simmons and seconded by President Elliott. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this motion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Any noes?
No.
You get the votes?
I just need Commissioner Adams to verbally say his vote. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then I've been asked to give a motion, right? Am I motioning this for the budget priorities? The legislative breakfast? Yeah, so I've been asked to give a motion to make, for some adjustments and amendments. Just to give folks a little background and history. Our superintendent and her team did a presentation to the state legislators around the priorities. And then some of the priorities needed to be aligned with the priorities that the board had already voted on. And there was some additional language that they had, but they really should be aligned. And we did meet with Jennifer from the Big Five and had several conversations around how other districts, superintendents and boards do it. And there is always an alignment of those priorities. So yes, the board will come up with the priorities. The administration may have some additional ones, but we do have to find this middle ground and really merge it into one document. And so that's what this is representing today. And so I'm asking for a motion to merge both the superintendent and the board priorities into one document so that we can have one voice as a district.
Motion.
I'm gonna motion and then it'll be open for a conversation, so.
You might end up with an amendment.
Huh?
So if you let, you might end up with an amendment.
No, you're just doing it so that we could open up for discussion.
It's fine.
So Parliament, would I motion to amend, which I think that's what I said, is motion to amend the priorities?
If it was previously adopted, then the proper motion is a motion to amend.
Yes.
Motion.
So motioned by Commissioner Simmons, seconded by President Elliott. Are there any questions related to the amendments that are listed in this document? No questions?
I just want to make sure that there's clarity. So what Vice President LeBron is saying is that it's best practice to really have the board, traditionally in Rochester has had a set of priorities and the administration has set a priorities. But as we were having conversations with our friends in the Big Five, they are saying that it really is stronger and much more impactful when the boards and the administrations are aligned. And so that is what Vice President LeBron is just saying, that they should be aligned because we're all working towards the same goal and moving towards having important, we're all moving towards the same goal, so they should be merged. So. Go ahead.
I just want to thank the superintendent for that clarification.
Yeah.
President Elliott?
Yeah, so in terms of our, the board's legislative agenda, will that be revised by the legislative breakfast?
I think that's what we're doing with this amendment here. Yeah, this is it. And then when we have our legislative breakfast, they would, this would be what they get, but also what we would all use as talking points and what we're advocating for.
Yeah, let me just refer to Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Adams, do you have any comments on what's been discussed?
So what I do have is faith in CALEIA and the administration and the district are putting this together. I've been out of commission, but I have faith in them doing the right thing and putting it together in a way that will be most impactful. That is what is important. We don't just want to present something.
Yeah, no, I just wanted, out of respect for you as the chair, just, you know, ask your input as chair of the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, just out of respect for your position.
And I thank you for checking in with me. That is how I feel. I feel very, I'm very confident that what you put together, I'm gonna be meeting with Charisma and CALEIA and everybody else on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Elliott, and thank you, Commissioner Adams. CALEIA?
Yes, and I just want to, once more, really great to see you, Commissioner Adams. He and I have been messaging back and forth, even when he's not great. He sends me a paragraph, one chunk at a time. So I'm really grateful to see you on, it makes my heart warm. With relation to the legislative priorities, I want to uplift that this is the first time that since I've been here that they have been aligned in such a way. I don't know if Commissioner Powell could speak to that. But I was part of a lot of work this weekend. We worked, I was at work until probably almost 11 o'clock on Friday. And then we worked Saturday, Sunday. We were on the, in a meeting until almost, what, 10 o'clock? This is the first time I've seen this kind of collaboration on trying to make sure that legislative priorities are up to date, that they're aligned, that they are succinct, that they speak to the point, even in meetings with Jennifer Kyle from the Big Five. And it makes me very proud to have Commissioner Adams say that he trusts the work that we're doing because this is one of the best documents that I've seen come out of, or collaboration. So I really hope to see that happen more in the future. And if you review, you will see a lot of background information. I'm really hoping that commissioners will also be able to bite onto that so that March 5th, when we have the legislative breakfast, we'll truly be able to own those documents and speak with the delegates on the behalf of the district.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for the comments and the remarks. Oh, yes, Commissioner Powell.
Just to pick up where our board clerk left off. Yes, the headings, the bullet points are all, they truly do mirror the board's priorities. And it fleshes them out, puts more meat on the bones. I do see though, when we compare this to what we discussed the last time this came up, when it was just board priorities. When we look on, and it's gonna be a little bit difficult to untangle, I think. The last section, local aid priorities, our conversation revolved around how the first two bullets are actually requests for the state to intercede. And so would, I would think would rightfully belong up on page one, the bottom of the state aid priorities, but it's a state. What we're asking is the state to write legislation impacting local aid. So the heading might need to be just state legislative priorities rather than state aid priorities in order to make the changes we made mirror, be mirrored in this document. Does that make sense to everybody else?
Yeah, President Elliott?
Yeah, Commissioner Powell, we met with the state delegation yesterday, yesterday. And so we really, we discussed exactly what you're saying. So they are aware that we're asking them to help us to carry this message to City Hall. So they're clear about that. They believe it's gonna be a challenge, but they're clear about the message.
Right, and all I'm saying is that, is this, we're at, is, when we changed it on our priorities last time we talked about this, I strongly urged that they be, the first two bullets be moved to the state priorities section based on what Commissioner LeBron said about her desire for that to be state legislation-driven. If we bury it down here in local aid, our state representatives aren't going to, yes, they heard you say it loud and clear, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna hone in on it because they say, oh, that's local, that's local. So if we put it in the state section, then it will, you know, get our representative's attention or their aides or whoever it is that's looking at it.
Commissioner Powell, in the meeting that we had yesterday with the state delegation, these two bullet points in particular were discussed. The information was shared. I think that as we are outlining the document, it becomes easier to read and understand as you are just compartmentalizing different priorities under different subheadings, but not specific to. We focused on the state priorities to really be budget-based on primarily foundation aid. And we added the social-emotional component piece because that is the board's priority and that forms the basis for the legislative breakfast that we're gonna be having next month.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were all real clear on that because, you know, I'm just trying to untangle this. I mean.
I think it would help to, this final document, which I definitely, I'm getting your point across. We went back and forth, it moved up. point across, we went back and forth. It moved up, it moved back down, it moved across. We moved it in various different ways to see if the, if the point was coming across. And essentially, what the thinking is, is that it's hard to see it up top and then see it at the end. Like, it just did not flow well in terms of the understanding that it is a local aid priority, but we're asking for the state to take action in it. So it made more sense to keep it all together and not lose the intent of what we're trying to bring across. So that's why it's kind of balked. But the point, definitely, I shared the point many, many times, and we moved it several times. And this is just kind of one of those compromises as we tried to merge the two documents and uphold the theme behind both.
If everyone else is comfortable with it, I can move with it. That's fine.
Okay. There are no other comments? I'll take a vote at this time. So all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Are you doing the virtual vote?
Yes, it's open. I'm sorry.
Chief Miller, please come on up and thank you for your patience. I just, not that I wanted to leave you the last for last, but I figured we could get through some of these other smaller pieces. Have you present?
No, thank you. Thank you, Vice President LeBron, President Elliott, Superintendent and Commissioners. Just us hunker-downers here at the end.
Hunker-downers.
And as we...
That's that word you learned in literacy class?
Yes, hunker-downers. And I could definitely see the through line of why we wanted to include this tonight, and really, the different presentations all connected to my presentation as well. And I want to thank the board for the legislative priorities, which truly call out in very specific and important ways the work that we need to do and the assistance we need relative to recruitment, which is the focus of my presentation tonight. I want to start off talking a little bit about reminding us and taking us through the story of the pandemic, the challenges that we are experiencing, including some of our own deficiencies organizationally, the vacancies that we experience, and some of the strategy and needed sustained supports to help us achieve our goals and to achieve the board's goals. In the wake of the pandemic, we all know that workers are expecting more from their employers. In particular, they expect employers to help alleviate or at least acknowledge their concerns, their needs, and their special circumstances. And many organizations across the nation and across the globe, really, have failed to do so. And as a result, workers have taken hold of options to leave and to look for work elsewhere. And in Rochester, what that has meant for us at times has meant our suburbs, who are also struggling to fill positions, use us as a recruitment pool to fill their vacancies. Reminding us that we had significant layoffs and furloughs at the start of the pandemic in security and food service and in paraprofessionals. And even prior to that, we had some layoffs in December 2019 and again in June 2020. And we've not fully recovered from those losses. Uncertainty left people to maybe stay where they were instead of coming back. They looked for other options. They went to other school districts locally and regionally, and they never returned. The stress of the pandemic contributed to higher levels of employee burnout, which is associated with higher turnover rates. And I think, if anything, the last two years, we have all in our own unique ways suffered challenges, whether they're in our personal lives or in our work lives. And time away from the workplace, when we did have perhaps some time away when we were remote, gave us time to consider our own life priorities and to rebalance some of those priorities, maybe putting our personal interests, our health, our families, and reevaluating how our careers align with our interests and our values. And we definitely saw that, not only in the Rochester City School District, but in all facets of the work world. And employees, including in the Rochester City School District, and many of us, right, for the first time in our lives, experienced the flexibility and the convenience of remote work as a result of the pandemic. And as a result, we did see, and we do know, that people use that as an option to think about, again, how does they earn a living and what they do with their life and how they make meaning of their life. It goes without saying that even prior to COVID-19 pandemic, school systems like ours were already facing serious crisis with respect to the national teacher shortage. In the most recent Gallup poll, which surveyed K-12 district superintendents, recruiting and retaining talent in teachers was a top challenge that virtually every single superintendent in this country identified. And the COVID-19 pandemic has only added to an already challenging task. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with other superintendents from the Big Five. I was our district representative in that meeting, along with a few other folks who do human capital work. And we met with Commissioner Betty Rosa to talk about the challenges that we're experiencing in our school districts, our like-school districts as members of the Big Five organization. And we talked about the supports that we need, and they're actually the same supports that you identified in your priorities in many ways. But we talked about the need to have, grow our own initiatives. We really need help from higher education. And I don't mean to be critical of our higher, our institutions of higher education, but as was said so eloquently by other superintendents in our meeting, higher education has failed us as a public education organization because they are not helping us to fill the dramatic needs that we have. And it is something that we agreed in that meeting, we need to call out, and we need to be more vocal in trying to partner with higher education to help us to solve the scarcity that exists and that we see. We need more help with bilingual recruitment. We need career ladder opportunities, and we need flexibilities from the State Education Department. One of the speakers in our meeting really was advocating that we want to see career and technical education programs in our districts, and we want to value the experience that someone from engineering has, and we give them experience, field experience for the years they've had in that field. But we don't do the same thing for teaching assistants and paraprofessionals when they go to get certified as a teacher. We don't count that they may have been working in education for decades or years when they want to become teachers. And so we ask for that flexibility. And so those are things I call out to support what you've also put forward, but also because it's critically important. And I noticed that recently, I don't know if it was today or earlier this week, that New York State Senate Democrats approved and put forward measures to ensure that at the legislative level, that there are measures and supports for increasing the diversity of our educators across the state, and to put real financial resources behind it. We cannot just wish things to happen. We have to be strategic. We have to put resources behind them, whether they're human resources or whether they are financial resources, to achieve those successes. And so, again, the current state, which I think I've emphasized, is that there is a national shortage of staff. There is a national shortage of educators that we see here in Rochester. And educators and our operational staff and our leaders have vocalized burnout. And we see that, we feel that. There's a continued decline in enrollment at college teacher preparation programs, limiting our ability to hire. And the volume of resignations and retirements that we experience in the district, both in our education ranks and in our operation ranks, is staggering. I will say, in terms of a shot in the arm to help us with financial and human resources, CERSA and ARP funding approval will allow us to implement strategic initiatives and staffing additions to ensure that we can do what we need to do. And it is a shot in the arm, and it's something we need to look at to ensure that we can sustain in some capacity. Some data, this reflects most recent years and the current year to date, the number of resignations and retirements that we see in the Rochester City School District. And you can see the volume for the past few years. You can see where we are at this point. Certainly, we are still in February, and we know that some resignations and retirement are coming in March, April, May, and June, and even into the summer, we know of some. But that's something that we contend with and we work on. And so I've shared this graphic, I've spoke to this before, that we all have a responsibility to play in how we recruit and we retain. It's not the work of a principal of a school, her alone. It's not the work of the Office of Human Capital alone. But every single one of us in the Rochester City School District, citizens, board members, community, staff, how we talk about our district, how we promote our district, how we help each other, how we support each other, we all attract or discourage people from coming to Rochester, and we all attract or discourage people from staying in the Rochester City School District. And we need to do more to think about how we can recruit and retain, and that's part of the work that we do in the Office of Human Capital. But it's something that I can, want to just reiterate, we all need to be thinking about ways we can do that, big and small. So challenges, I want to be really honest about the challenges that we are experiencing. I want to, I've been in the district since October 2020. I came here, I noted things that needed to be different and improved, and we're working to do that. But one of the things that's been often talked about, and it was part of tonight's series of updates to the board, was the inadequacy and the insufficiency of the human capital management system. And shout out to John Parsons, who presented, and his leadership and work to assist us. Because really, our transition from PeopleSoft to Oracle is really bellwether to our ability to ensure change in the district. And he's certainly helping us to do that with the team that we're working through. But there are manual systems that just shouldn't be manual. And I was thinking, as he was presenting, imagine if you had the same cell phone you had 15 years ago, what you could do with it or couldn't do with it. And that's what we're dealing with in the Office of Human Capital. If I want to know, just as a simple example, if I want to know how many people were absent today, I have to have a staff person spend a couple hours doing that. I should be able to click open a screen on my computer that's web-based, and it just, it's there. It's a dashboard for me. Instead, I have to, I have to take somebody off of doing something else to spend a couple hours to help me get those data. And that's just one simple example. And so I got to tell you, I'm not able to monitor and evaluate data like I should be able to, and that has an impact. And so our systems are really outdated. And I know you know this, and so I thank you for your support in helping us to realize this oracle change, but it cannot come soon enough. We have had significant turnover in the Office of Human Capital. When I got here, there were, including myself, there were 19 of us in the Office of Human Capital. And in my time here, again, which is, I think I'm in 15 months, 42% of my staff has turned over in just that short amount of time. The same reasons that I spoke about why people are leaving the workforce, they felt as well. Reconsidering priorities, reconsidering what was important to them, but not necessarily feeling success, feeling really challenged, feeling that they didn't have the kinds of supports to do their work effectively and being pulled by other things. And so it has been a struggle. And with that, you know when you have turnover, you have a loss of mind power, you have a loss of experience. And so that has been a challenge. And part of what I want to talk about tonight is the need that we have, and I want to look at other Big Five school districts in contrast to our own, in terms of how they're staffed and how we're staffed. We have not had staff in the Office of Human Capital committed to recruitment. What we've had is we've had people take on, on top of their job, trying to be recruiters and to do that work. We do not have dedicated recruiters. And I made the analogy, it's like trying to operate a high school without an English department. It's just unthinkable. And so we have to write that, and we're going to through ARP funding, and I'm going to share about that. I have to acknowledge that there has been some inconsistent customer service experience, both for candidates who are trying to apply to work in this district, but also for our hiring leaders, our principals, and our heads of departments. And in some instances, we have had issues with workflows. In my time here, I've observed it, and we've worked to try to solve those things. We've had some issues of adherence to some of our procedures, and we've had some issues with quality control. And I'm sure many of us, whether you're listening or in the room, you've experienced some of those challenges. And we need to, we need to know when there's misses so that we can follow up and we can look at, okay, what happened in this situation? What fell down? What do we need to do to look at our standard operating procedures? What do we need to do to resolve this so it doesn't happen again? But that has happened, in part because of our systems, in part because of the turnover, in part because of the incredible strain that I would say folks are under. We've also had a lack of access to funding and resources to ensure change. I'm going to talk about our vacancies in a moment, but as we talk about CERSA and ARP-funded additions, this slide reflects the positions that are being added into our district from CERSA and ARP. And I know we've spent a lot of time paying attention to what those are. 297.3 FTE positions are being added in this year alone. That's a big addition, right, that we need to ensure we are meeting the needs of the organization to fill them. We've only recently added positions to Human Capital. We're in the process of posting to have recruiters, and it's important that we have that to assist with that. So in terms of our actual vacancies today, and I'm going to go through all of them here, ASAR, which is our administrators' unit, has 27 vacancies. BENT, which is our operations unit, has 135 and a half. We have other vacancies in the exempt groups, six. Our per diem substitutes, 44. Our paraprofessionals, 95. And the Teachers' Association, 144. And that ranges, with the teachers, that's about a 5% vacancy to a high within wrap, which is 13% of the staff vacant. I also want to call out, and CFO Pierce alluded to this earlier, given, for a variety of reasons, given the number of vacancies that we have, we have 137 positions in the district that are vacant that we're choosing to keep vacant. And we're choosing to keep them vacant for a variety of reasons. Some of them were intended to start the year off as vacant, whether they're in special education or multi or bilingual education, so that as populations grow, or if they grow, we have staffing to invest to meet the needs of the students that are in those areas. And so some of those positions remain vacant. So we're not including those in the vacancies. But there are other positions, like paraprofessionals for COVID. We don't have the same need anymore relative to COVID, thankfully. And so some of those positions are remaining vacant. They're grant-funded. They'll probably disappear after this year because they weren't and aren't needed. We also have some teachers on special assignment that we're choosing not to fill because we don't want to pull people out of classrooms. We need people to stay in the classrooms. East High School has some vacant positions that they're choosing not to fill. And then we have some operational positions, for a variety of reasons, we're just not filling. And so with those 137 FTEs, that's where we need to, as you called on us to do tonight, really look at those as a quick starting point to make determinations about whether we get rid of those for next year's budget. And then there's 116 of our positions are filled by long-term emergency subs. What we do is, we know that we sometimes cannot fill a position with a fully certified teacher. We may have somebody who's earned a bachelor's or a master's in mathematics. They want to be a math teacher. They're still working to get their graduate degree in education and get certified. And we hire them in an emergency basis to fill our math needs. So we do have 116 people filling in that. When you look at the ASAR vacancies, you'll note that there are also some positions here that we are not necessarily speeding to fill at the moment because, again, we don't want to pull people out of schools. And so some of these positions, which are CERSA or ARP-funded, may end up being a July 1st, but they're reflective of some of the vacancies that we have. I'd call out positions like Director of ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies. We already have a director in each of those areas. This was intended to add a second one to support the needs of the district. And so those are just examples of ones we may be holding on, whereas others, we're working to fill, like a manager of financial reporting and finance. In terms of BENT, you can see the range of positions that are vacant at this time right now. We've previously talked about our challenges with bus drivers. Despite creating some financial incentives for bus drivers, we still have vacancies. I was in touch with Transportation last week, and they're working to get some people in through training. And they will, I believe, have six new bus drivers that they're working through an internal training program right now. training program right now. But you'll see that we have a variety of vacancies in custodial engineers, which requires specialized certification and training. We've been meeting weekly with, the last two weeks, with our folks in operations, to develop plans for how we can build our own and grow our own for those positions, and how we might be able to incentivize, to offer to pay for their training, so that we can get people certified in those areas. You'll note food service helper vacancies. It's 25 FTE, but a lot of those positions are very much part-time positions. And so, they may not be the most attractive for everyone, but we have a large FTE vacancy there. You'll also note that in terms of clerical, if you look at office clerk, you'll see there's varied titles there, and there are vacancies in our clerical ranks, which really has an impact on schools. You know this, if there's not a clerical person there to support the needs of the school. You'll note that in terms of sentries, we've really closed the gap. You know, back a few months ago, there were significant vacancies there. We have worked to really close on that, and that's in large part to the Office of Safety and Security. In terms of RAP, you'll see vacancies here as well. We had more significant vacancies, and we've had turnover in RAP, but settling the contract right before Christmas, on December 23rd, and raising the base pay to $15 an hour, the minimum pay in the district is now 15 for all positions, that increase has had an impact and has helped our recruitment and hiring. And certainly, you know, we have work to do to further compensate our staff with more livable wages, but that has certainly been a positive, because it was $12.50 before that contract was settled. In terms of the teaching ranks, with respect to RTA, and you know, because you see this on Board Docs, we have resignations every month, right? We have people leaving. Again, not to diss our suburban districts, but part of their recruitment strategy is to hire ours, where we can't do that, or we don't really, aren't able to do that. We have to be more strategic and creative. But you'll note that we have significant special education vacancies, and that is a problem for us. You'll also note that there's 21 FTEs and teachers on special assignment. Again, we're largely trying to, again, not pull out of the classroom. That is an area where we can attract people from the suburbs to come to Rochester for some of those unique positions, because it puts people on a career ladder, gives them other opportunities. It's also been a way for us to attract people back to the Rochester City School District. We have been working to fill per diem building-based substitute teachers. We recently added 75 positions through CERSA and ARP funding. And so, you see that there's 44 vacancies right now. That's in large part because we recently created 75, and we're working to fill those to bring more subs consistently into the schools. And you'll also note that there are some vacancies that aren't in unions, and three of those positions actually are in the Office of Human Capital. So again, recruitment and retention is critical, and it's our intent in the Office of Human Capital to ensure that we can recruit, develop, support, and retain the most effective diverse staff. That's our mission, that's what we're aiming to do. And so, we have a recruitment and retention task force that's involving various stakeholders, that's been meeting for over a year. We've worked with the Ferrish Foundation for a couple of years previously, to help us think about our strategy, and that includes pipeline and partnership with other organizations, colleges, higher education. And so, I'm not going to go into depth on those things, because I've shared those with you before. But I do want to highlight some recruitment strategies that I haven't shared before, that are really of critical importance. And again, customer service. We need to ensure that we are providing a platinum level of customer service, not the golden rule, the platinum rule. We need to not do unto others as we would want done to us. We actually need to understand what people want and meet their needs relative to that. And that's a difference, that's an important difference. It's how we should behave across the district, not just in Human Capital. But we need to develop and articulate those priorities. We need to have a strategic focus. We're largely, as a Human Capital team, because of our limitations, focused on transaction, getting people in and processing them, and getting them paid and into the system, and we can't do that. We have to be out and about, we have to create relationships with candidates, and we have to create relationships with principals and other leaders. We need to leverage our technological capacity. Again, the transition to Oracle will help us to do that. And our application system is insufficient as well, I would say. But it's the best we've got at this moment, and we need to leverage it the best we can. It's frontline. The other thing that we're going to be doing, and we've done, we held an event in December, was hold virtual recruiting fairs, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. I've said this, I'll say it again, we need to have more frequent, but shorter connections with every candidate that applies to the district. Now, more than ever, people want to be, feel valued and heard, and they want to have that personal connection. We're not doing that well right now. We're just not. And we need to be. We need to have frequent personal touchpoints to attract and to motivate candidates, and we need to partner with principals and other hiring leaders, so that they also feel that connection. They don't right now. So we need to do that. And we need to ensure that there's successful handoffs from when people get hired to when they start, and then how they get onboarded in the school or the department that they're working in. And we need to, we need to, you know, I'm going to talk about-
Chris, I'm sorry, before, it's me, it's Commissioner LeBron, I have my mask on. But before you move on to, first of all, thank you for recognizing that we're just not doing that right now, right? But, and I read through your presentation, I just, I guess I need to understand what we're going to do now, moving forward as of the 15th of February, so that we are providing a better customer service. I understand the challenges, but I will tell you, these are all the same systems that existed under previous chiefs that were here, and we were able to hire and have a different experience for folks. I understand 42% left. I would, I would want to understand that and dig into that a little bit deeper myself. Unfortunately, not tonight, because we have, like I said, we have some guests coming to talk to us about some legal things. But talk to me about what is going to be the plan then, right now, to change this around? There's a lot of stuff here that you're talking about systemically changing, but that doesn't help us when people are applying today, tomorrow, next week, and they're not hearing back. Like, what needs to happen, and what can we do to support that?
Yeah, so, on the, a few slides ahead, I'll just go to those. One, we need to have recruiters, right? We were approved last week to have recruiters through the ARP funding, and so we're going to hire recruiters who can do that. We need to have, and I've shared this graphic before, principals are our most important client, students are our most important, but in terms of staff, right? Principals are most important, and we need to support them. And so, we support them with the school chief, we support them with the Director of Staff Relations to assist them, and then we also need to support them with a recruiter who can champion their needs at the school, and can be that voice and that connect that helps them fill their needs, and is at the same time engaging and interacting with candidates every day and along the way in the process, so they can link them into their schools. So, a recruiter will have a portfolio of schools that she's responsible for, and she'll connect with the school chief, she'll connect with the principal, and she'll help to meet their needs as their champion. So that's one.
Okay, so let me just stop you there, because like, this is a similar system with Rochester Regional Health, because of the Unity merger, they have like, in HR, there is a one person assigned to a block, if you will, of some of the systems there. But wouldn't this recruiter just be an additional person that we're now adding to a layer of other underlying issues? So this recruiter is going to go out and recruit people, and then bring them, or encourage them to apply. Now we're putting them in this cycle of an old antiquated system, they're not hearing back, they don't know. I mean, they may be able to respond to the recruiter to check in, but then wouldn't the recruiter internally run into the same issues? And I ask that, because some of our principals have taken on that role of being recruiters. They have gone out and like, recruited people to work in their schools, and they've applied, and then they hear nothing, and then they're the ones taking on the responsibility of calling HCI. I have not heard one principal telling me that they've gone to their chief to be that connector back to HCI, that they themselves have tried to, you know, navigate through HCI, what's going on with the person that they've identified that have applied. So, just wondering if we're adding one more layer to the system that's not functioning at the peak that it needs to.
Yeah, I don't think of it as adding a layer. I think, again, it, and regional health is doing, this is best practice, this is what organizations do. We have not been engaged in best practice in the Rochester City School District when it comes to human resources, human capital. We've just, we have not staffed an office to do this work. And I want to share, because I want to show you Buffalo and Syracuse, and I was in Syracuse for six years, and so I did this work there. And when you look at our, our staff size, and you look at our relative HR offices, you look at the ratios of staff in HR to actual staff in the district, you see some differences. And if you were to apply what Bloomberg says, right? Bloomberg would, does this research, and they say, and I'm not necessarily asking for this, but what they say is that for every staff that you have, you should have one, for every 100 staff in your organization, you should have 1.4 FTE committed to human capital-type work, to ensure that their success in their hiring, and et cetera, et cetera. Many organizations look at that. That's like a gold standard. I'm not asking for that. You can see, if we did that in Rochester, we would have 62 people. If you lowered that to a 0.8, we would have 35 people. And again, I'm not asking for that either, right? So, that's the Bloomberg standard, right? If we just look at what Buffalo and Syracuse have, and we look at their ratios, and we apply their ratios, right? In Buffalo, they have one for every 175, Syracuse has one for every 140, we have one for 186. And this doesn't take into account the 300 positions we just added over the last couple of months for CERSA and ARP. But if we were to apply those ratios here, and we applied the Syracuse ratio to Rochester, we would have eight more staff in our Human Capital office. If I had this level of support I had in Syracuse, I'd have eight more staff.
Chris, just with clarification, you would have eight more staff to the 42% that you lost, or 42% plus the eight, is what you're saying?
You would add. So, if I'm fully staffed, I'm supposed to have-
You said 19, you have 45%.
When I started, I had multiple vacancies when I got here. If, right now, I have, if I'm fully staffed and I'm not, I should have 24 people in my office. If I applied what Syracuse, same level of support, I would have 32 staff in my office.
How many people do you currently have in your office?
24 with three vacancies.
Right now?
Right now, it's 21, and that includes me.
Okay. And then, just going back to the best practices piece, so just to uplift that Rochester Regional Health has an HR specialist assigned to different departments and buildings, and geographically, it's a large organization, it's actually international. But, again, when you apply, at the very basic, I just want to go right back to the very basics, 101. When you apply, you do get an email back saying, "We've received your application. Here are the next steps, here's what to expect." You know, if your application is selected for an interview, you'll hear back from someone within two weeks. If you have any questions in the meantime, here is a contact person. We don't even do that, and that's what I'm saying. We're adding a recruiter, but if that backend piece at the very, some of the basics are not aligning, like, how do we get to fixing some of the basics, so that when we add recruiters, they're not going and recruiting people and saying, "Apply to RCSD," and they never hear back? Because we are in the highest competitive market that I've ever seen in my lifetime for jobs. Yes, there are, you can go work at Panera's and make $20 an hour versus coming to work with kids, and probably a system that was probably more, or less traumatic for people to work in. So it is a highly competitive market. We can't even keep up with that. Then what will a recruiter do if we don't have some of the basic foundations done?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. So I would imagine, right, and this could float, but I would imagine that the first hour of every day would be spent, okay, let's look at who applied yesterday, and let's contact them. Let's get them on the phone. Let's text message, there's different uses of technology. Let's engage with them, because the more personalized connections we can have, the better we're going to hook and keep people, and make them feel important and valued. And we need to shift, right? We want to shift our organization that people are interviewing us as much as we're interviewing them. We don't do that right now, right? On some level, we do. When we're involved with trying to fill leadership positions, principals, right, as an example, and if they're external, we're trying to do that, right? And at the same time, we want to grow and develop our own internal people, but those are the kinds of things we need to be able to do. So I would expect a recruiter to, every day, be managing who's applying, so that the next day, or if it's over the weekend that they apply, that Monday, right, they're going to get some contact from somebody. That's what we have to do. That's what we should be doing.
And I appreciate that explanation, that that's the vision that you have for the recruiters as you hire them. And then, I just would like to add, though, and this is a public plea to the community and to any principals and staff that have identified people to work in RCSD and have not heard back, if they can reach out to me, I would love to compile a list and work directly with HCI to figure out, how do we reach out to these folks and get them to work in our district? Because some of them were qualified people who ended up leaving to other school districts. We're also competing with the suburbs, too, when we're talking about this educational sphere. So it's a tough market, and we have to rise to the occasion and use these ASAR, ARP dollars and CRESTA dollars to not just recruit, but stand out above every other competitor that we have.
And, you know, when I heard some of those stories about, from a principal or otherwise, it said, you know, a candidate applied, and it's like they fell in a black hole. What we did in December was, we said, "Let's audit everybody who's applied, let's email." And at the time, that's what we did, "Let's email everybody who's in the system right now, whether they've been interviewed or not, let's email them. Let's let them know that we're going to hold a virtual recruiting event, and we're going to invite them to that virtual recruiting event." And we actually had commitments from leaders from all over the organization to be there to interview, to engage, and to interact. And we were able to hire about 50 people right on the spot from that one event, and then another 50 people that moved forward and were advanced. And a lot of these were entry-level positions, paraprofessionals. It was highly successful. What I would have preferred was phone calls to people, right? But that's where we started, and in the next month or so, we're actually going to be, next month, I should say, we're actually working through branding right now. We're going to be using a virtual recruitment tool, which this is a wave of the future. I don't know if you've experienced this, but much of our lives are going to shift in some ways, where we're going to be in a virtual world, where like, you go to the doctor's office, or wherever you go, doctor's not a good example. But let's say you want to get a job. You go to a platform that looks like a campus, and you can go to, we'll have open houses, we'll have workshops, recruitment fairs, orientations, meet and greets, panels, and people can choose where they want to go. And we'll have a schedule of what they can attend, and through harvesting the technology. And then there'll be like, a gymnasium, right? And in that gymnasium will be a table for every department or every school, and they can go and they can interact. And instead of physically having to go to an event, we have it through the technology that's highly customizable to our needs. And it could be that, you know what, on a particular day, we're having a finance fair. On a different day, we may have all elementary schools in a fair. Or a different day, we may just have a panel discussion, where you can learn about working in the Rochester City School District from principals and others, so that people can engage and interact using technology and new and creative ways to really expand what we do. So that's an important piece. And I just want to go back and speak to what is actually in ARP. And I'm not the type of person that believes you throw, you add positions to solve problems, but I want you, and it's in the packet that you see it, I want you to understand, you know, from my perspective coming in here, we are under-resourced, and we cannot efficiently do what we need to do. And it's in part led to the turnover that we have, and what I think you hear around people's lack of support, they feel that, right? So, through ARP, we are adding two positions to ensure that civil service and operations supports are in place. We have somebody that we hired to be kind of the strategist for our recruitment work. She can't do it because she's doing other work. And so, she's trying to do it on top of that other job, but she's been stretched very thin. And, you know, there's a piece of this, that the ARP dollars, we didn't have access to them until recently. I thought, coming to Rochester City School District, I joined in October 2020, I thought I would have access and have more help by July 1st, 2021, and I didn't. So, you know, I share that, because that's been some of the limitations of the federal dollars that we received. But we'll be adding that, we'll be adding, if we're going to be recruiting people from elsewhere, particularly candidates of color, and they're coming from other communities- of color, and they're coming from other communities, how can we ensure they're mentored and they're supported and that they're able to network into the community and the school district? Because if they do, they'll stay. So we're going to have a teacher on special assignment for that purpose. We'll have the three recruiters. And then substitute management, I know you all know how challenging that is, we're adding another position to support that work. And so with these additional six, excuse me, seven positions here, we will be able to enact our strategy around this and to meet the needs that I think you expect, that I expect, that our clients, principals and directors expect.
I'm going to ask if there's any questions. We do have to wrap up because of another appointment that we all have to attend with legal.
And I'll just share that in the back, you have KPIs. What would be our key performance indicators of success? How will we measure our success?
Thank you. And I do want to thank you for a very comprehensive 35-slide presentation, so thank you for that. And I want to uplift that. I also would ask that if there are additional questions, that we perhaps save it for the Board Business Meeting because we have to wrap up. So I do apologize for that. Thank you. I will follow up with you.
I think this speaks to the importance and the value of Human Capital, right? Being before the Board, we don't get a lot of opportunities in terms of the HR Committee. So I thank you for the invitation.
We're going to change that.
Yeah. President Elliott has already indicated that we're going to change that, and I will support that because we do have to monitor, this has to be more on the Board poll, I'm aware. Is that what you're going to tell me?
No, I was just about to remind folks that the question log is definitely, I know we're running a little bit late, but the question log is definitely available for submission of questions because I'm sure that there's a lot. So please send them my way, and I will make sure that they get addressed. It's going to be a special log just for this purpose, so it won't get mixed in with the other stuff.
Thank you. And then there is a Board poll, and then I'm going to actually adjourn the meeting. Do I need to adjourn it now?
Yes.
So I'm going to adjourn the meeting, ask that you all take the Board poll, and then we'll go down to meet with our lawyers. Okay?
So you just need a motion to adjourn it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.